Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. And for those who are watching, we appreciate your tuning in. We'll call the meeting to order. And Mr. Martin, if you would, help us with the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Sure.
Please.
Our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings in our lives. Lord, we come to you with open hearts and open eyes. We ask that you give us strength and encouragement as we start a new season in our lives. We've got opportunities in a new year moving forward, and we'd like to thank you for protecting us and watching over us. Please be with our community, our first responders, our military, and be with us this evening and guide us in wisdom and in knowledge in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. We're excited about starting our new year. Public hearing number one. There's some unforeseen circumstances where some of the principal players aren't able to be present, so we will re-advertise that for a future date. So you'll see the posting in the paper, and it'll be on a future agenda.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I just want to point out that the development agreement that was on file with the clerk's office, as is required by the general statutes, was a draft, and I believe there was a draft watermark on it. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
That the substance of that is likely not going to change, but there will likely be some tweaks. So for those members of the public that asked for a copy of it when it was advertised for tonight, may want to ask for a copy of the iteration that exists at the time. The public hearings reschedule.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've received a number of comments about the Williamsburg tract proposal, and just know that I appreciate that those have drawn attention to that and have provided input, and all of that will be considered prior to rescheduling it. Counsel, are you okay with that? Public hearing number two in action. This public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed modification to Pine Forest Plantation. Matt, if you will, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counsel. First, I'd like to point out that this is a proposed modification to a special use permit, as such as a quasi-judicial hearing. Do we need to have -- I asked the town attorney whether we need to go ahead and have people sworn in prior to getting started.
Yes, we do. Anyone who wants to provide testimony will have to be sworn in.
Okay.
It is quasi-judicial in nature. We've done this before, but as a reminder, we'll conduct it in a manner to ensure procedural and substantive due process. All those who wish to testify must be sworn in. They will then be subject to cross-examination, as well as subject to questions from the board. The applicant has the burden of proof to show that they meet the criteria in our code. And does anyone have a conflict of interest with respect to this particular subject matter? Let's start with financial interests.
No.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, if you'll just note in the minutes that negative responses.
Yes.
Has anyone made a site visit to this site for the purpose of assessing this application? All right. Does anyone on the council have a close or familiar relationship with the applicant? By familiar, I mean family.
No.
Okay. Can you think of any reason why you can't be fair and impartial tonight and base your vote solely on the competent evidence offered during this hearing? All right. Madam Clerk, if you will swear in all those who wish to testify.
I wanted to speak in the Pine Forest. If you'll come forward, please. Okay. I'm going to raise your right hand. I solemnly swear that the evidence you give to the town council during this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Mayor, the order we will proceed will first hear from staff, who will introduce the item. Again, subject to cross-examination. We will then hear from the applicant, and the applicant and its witnesses will be subject to cross-examination, and then any other party who has standing, we will hear from them last.
It's your floor.
Well, I'm just trying to help.
Thank you very much.
It's your floor. By statute, it's your floor. I'm just trying to help some. So if there's not any questions, we'll proceed with Mr. Kirkland.
Okay, great. So this is, as you mentioned, the second public hearing we had on the agenda for tonight. It's a special use permit modification for the Pine Forest master plan. So the Pine Forest Planning and Development is a planning and development via special use permit, contains approximately 564 acres, approved for a maximum of 2,850 dwelling units, 150,000 square feet of general retail, commercial, mixed-use, and 100,000 square feet of medicinal health care campus. The Pine Forest Development Company has applied for a modification to the special use permit. The proposed modification would amend the phased development plan to convert the mixed-use commercial and residential sections of the plan to single-family residential and civic slash retail commercial. I'll show you what that looks like. We've got those maps included in your agenda packet, and they'll be on the screen as well in just a second. Oh, just right now, actually. So I'll pull up a -- oh, you can't see the arrow. You can't see the arrow. Okay. So the sections we're talking about here are MX-1 and MX-2. Those are listed on their conceptual development plan as mixed-use, commercial, and residential. The proposed modification would change those. You would see MX-2 here become single-family residential, and MX-1 become commercial, retail commercial instead. So basically splitting those uses out where before it was mixed. So special use permit standards, you have the procedures and your town council action information, including your agenda packet. The applicant has the burden of producing competent substantial evidence, tending to establish the facts and conditions. The Court of Appeals has approved four general standards for considering and approving a special use permit, that it does not materially endanger the public health or safety, meets all the required conditions and specifications, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. That being said, that's the extent of my input on this. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them. If you have questions about the application or the substance of it, the applicant's here as well, I believe they have a presentation for you as well.
Mr. Kirkland, would you like to introduce pages 26 through 37 of the agenda packet pertaining to this application into evidence as exhibit one?
Yes, sir.
Any objection from the applicant? Madam Mayor, we'll accept the agenda packet related to this item into evidence as exhibit one without objection.
Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to cross-examine Mr. Kirkland? Any questions from the board to Mr. Kirkland at this point?
One question, Matt, if I may. It's approved already for 564 acres, 2,850 units. It is going from commercial to more single-family, but it is not increasing the number of 2,850 units.
They have not proposed any increases.
If there are no further questions from the board, we'll hear from the applicant.
Yes.
You can use either the arrow keys or the clicker there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Name, Mayor White, members of the town council. My name is Maggie Bennington. I'm an attorney with Lee Case in Wilmington, North Carolina, and tonight I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Pine Forest Development Company. A little bit of history on this project. In March of 2017, the town of Oak Island did approve what was then a conditional use permit for the development of more than 500 acres off Highway 211. It was a planned unit development, or PUD, as we call it for short, now known as Pine Forest Plantation of Oak Island. The approval was for a phased plan, and that is as opposed to a site-specific plan, as there is less detail and certainty about a proposed project of this size. As the development progresses, the idea is that the developer will come back before you with additional details, which is what we are doing tonight. This particular PUD was amended in March of last year to add a conventional residential and performance residential to the definition of single-family residence, and that doesn't really have any bearing on tonight, but it has been modified in the past. Tonight, as Matt indicated, we are requesting that the two parcels identified as MX-1 and MX-2 on the original PUD and located along Pine Plantation Parkway near the main access point be changed to CR-3 and SFR-23 respectively. So in the original planned unit development, MX was defined as mixed-use multi-story buildings to allow for greater open space. It included walkable and pedestrian-oriented street scape. It also contemplated associated retail and professional businesses to support not only the residential component of the PUD itself, but to help the community as well, the community at large outside of the planned unit development. Further, the definition of MX included potential residential over retail. So tonight's request leaves a large majority of those ideas in play. It will still include walkable and pedestrian-oriented street scape. There will still be a mixed-use component. They will just be separated. The developer would simply like to split the residential and commercial components so that they are located horizontal to one another, rather than the potential vertical residential over retail. The CR-3 parcel is located closest to Highway 211, and the SFR-23 parcel would be developed as a townhouse project to serve as a transition between the commercial on Highway 211 and the single-family and multifamily that has already been developed further into the planned unit development. So again, you'll see here that we do have two mixed-use sections that would now be, instead of mixing the use on each parcel, it would be commercial on one and residential on the other. And this is due to, again, developer has more information now in 2023 than they did in 2017, and it's not looking like the residential over retail is the -- has been the best seller. Local market, again, is -- the local market demand is driving this use instead of the -- what was originally contemplated back in 2017. And I know I was talking to Mr. Henry tonight, who is with Pine Forest Development Company, and originally, when he had his pre-application meeting with Mr. Kirkland, I don't believe there were any other townhomes underway or requested at that time, so we think that would be a good fit for this area. As Mr. Kirkland indicated, there are four factors to be considered, and it is our burden to prove that those factors have been met with the council this evening. I think the two, the first two are -- can kind of be answered in the same fashion, that it will not materially endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare, and that it meets all of the required conditions and specifications. All development activities and uses must be permitted and approved by local and state regulatory agencies. So again, this is just a change to the concept plan of the planned unit development. It is not site-specific, and all of those things will have to be approved before construction can begin. This is what the proposed townhomes will look like. This is kind of an aerial, it's very general, proposing the 22 townhome units. And again, to answer the question that was posed earlier, it would not increase the overall density of the planned unit development. That's not what we're requesting to do. This is a great area to be developed because the water, sewer, and stormwater are already available and just have to be connected to this site. Trust Builder Group is who will be building these townhomes. And they are already one of the existing builders in Pine Forest.
You can back up if you would like.
Yes. That was a disruption.
That's okay. The water, so --
Take your time.
So this is one of those things where infill development is, the water, sewer, and storm water are already there and available, they just have to be connected. Trust Builder Group is already an existing builder for Pine Forest. That's who would be building the townhomes. And again, the owners would have walking access to the amenity center and clubhouse, the commercial district once it's established, and Pine Forest common areas. So again, here's another example of the product. So as I said, the residential over retail has not proven in this market to be necessarily a good product, and this is because the market is changing. As you guys know, the Highway 211 road project has been delayed multiple times, and that's making it difficult for businesses to come in along Highway 211. Just some other facts about the area, the Midway Commons doesn't have any of their out parcels sold to date, and as you guys know, the -- so it makes it difficult to have other commercial retailers come in. If we get some more residents, we might get more commercial to come where that is. There are still five available parcels in the medical campus as well, which is located on the other side of Pine Plantation Parkway. So again, this slide is just showing the two affected parcels, the commercial right there along Highway 211 and single-family resident, the SFR-23. Another thing that has affected this a little bit is that overall, there is a -- there's a now a conservation easement. This was originally a phase one and a phase two, and several hundred acres, well, 1297.5 acres have been dedicated to the conservation easement. Really, all this means is that means less rooftops. So less residential rooftops, less commercial retailers are going to want to come in, and again, making the vertical mixed-use a little bit more difficult for the developer. And this is just showing the different phases. We're down there in the blue in phase one, which is where our request is. The conservation easement is marked in the green, and then phase two is in yellow, which is in the future. As to the final two components of the special use permit, that it is in harmony with the area where it is located and general conformity with the comprehensive plan, the future land use designation for this is residential mixed-use with open space and conservation. The higher density in the smaller spaces does allow for more open space, which this community in all of the different parcels that have been developed represents. And we do not think that this will substantially injure the value of adjoining land. In fact, we think it will probably increase it. Again, we think that the townhome project is a perfect transition between the commercial, which will eventually be on Highway 211, and the single-family that's behind it, and then the multifamily that is adjacent to and sort of behind the single-family residences. Again, there's walking access to the amenity center and clubhouse, as well as the commercial district, and the common areas that are already -- that have already been developed there. I don't know if you have questions, if there's anything that my team would like to add. Guess if you guys have questions, see if we can address those first.
Madam Mayor, if I just, a few housekeeping things for the record. Ms. Bennington, would you like to introduce the PowerPoint as exhibit two?
Yes, sir, I would.
And I didn't count them, and I can't tell from what I'm looking at. How many total slides are there?
I think there's 30 total. We were just going to show the other parts that have already been developed, and but yes, there's 30 total.
Mr. Kirkland, you don't -- no objections? Madam Mayor will receive that PowerPoint as exhibit two. And then the other question I had, with respect to the conservation easement, has that already been executed and recorded?
Yes.
Okay. And who's that, who's the grantee?
Thank you.
Actually, could you tell me that since?
Equity Investments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as part of the staff report, did that include our application and narrative? I would also like to make sure that gets entered into the record. I don't think it was -- maybe it was. It was. Okay. Matt's saying it was.
And we can confirm that before we close the hearing.
Okay. I think it was, as well as the updated PUD plan. So yes, just the presentation.
Any cross? Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Counsel. Would it be fair to say that the change from MX-1 to CR-3 and MX-2 to single-family residential, that there'll be -- that it sounds benign. Is there a net loss of commercial space, or is it remaining the same when you reconfigure this?
I'm going to let my team answer this one. So this is Brad Schuler with Paramount, and if you would just do me a favor and state your education, any certificates and your experience so that...
My name is Brad Schuler. I'm a professional planner with Paramount Engineering. I have a bachelor's in science from East Carolina University in urban and regional planning, and I'm certified through the American Institute of Certified Planners. To answer your question, it's going from a mixed-use district to commercial. It's not apples to apples. Often, when you're designing a site, not only are you thinking of the size of the building, but the components that are needed to support the size of that building. So the amount of parking is really the -- one of the big things, but you also have landscaping and then the stormwater system. So when you have a mixed-use multi-story building, there's less area in order to actually construct the building, because you're going to need more parking for the residential units, because you're going to have a larger building. So overall, it is likely less commercial area, but it's not a direct -- it's not as much as you think it would be, if that makes any sense.
It does make sense. What's the estimated loss to the tax base? Is it 30% less commercial or 20%?
It's really hard to know the exact square footage. You know, businesses vary, so like a medical office is going to need more parking than an attorney's office. So it's really going to depend on the type of business that wants to locate there as far as the size of the building. I think this PUD estimated about 30% of the commercial area would actually be building space. The change here is we're changing 12 acres. Eight of it will still remain commercial. Four of it will go to the single-family district.
And parking would depend on the attorney, wouldn't it?
I would just like to tender Mr. Schuler as an expert for the record.
Ms. Bennington would like to tender Mr. Schuler as an expert. Recommend we accept and receive his testimony, his expert testimony. He has specialized knowledge in the field of planning.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Could you, do you have access to an agenda packet?
I do not.
I want to make sure what you think is in it is in it, so you can take mine, pages 26 through 37. Might be the very last two pages, but I can't tell.
It's minus 30% of the space for retail.
Melz, sign up and get sworn in to provide testimony at this hearing. Does anyone in the audience want to provide testimony at this hearing?
Can we ask the question?
You have to come in, come up, get sworn in first. Then I need to ask you a few questions about your association with this project to make sure you have standing.
My name is Sharon Borst. I'm a resident here at 207 Northeast 48th Street.
So you live within the town?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I just had, actually had one question, which--
I'm sorry. Give me your name one more time.
Sharon. B-O-R-S-T.
Okay. Ms. Borst, this is a procedural matter, so Ms. Bennington, do you have any questions regarding standing? I'm going to find that she has standing for purposes of this hearing, but do you -- I'll give you an opportunity to ask her standing questions. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Borst.
Okay. I just wanted to clear up something that I found to be confusing. You're stating that you're not increasing residential. However, in your testimony, you mentioned that residential was more preferred at this time due to market conditions. And I'm, and then you introduced the townhomes, and I'm just wondering, how can that not increase the resident, the amount of residential units? In other words, at the beginning, did you overstate how many were going to be here? Because it sounds like, in your testimony, that they're making a switch to more residential over commercial. Thank you.
And if you'll just say again, or I'll say it for you, Brad Schuler, professional planner from Paramount, on behalf of the applicant, is going to answer Ms. Borst's questions. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So when a planned development is a type of development where you get a general overall master plan approved, and really what that does, it just sets the overall intensity and types of land uses within a very large product that's going to take multiple years to complete. And the benefit of that is that it gives some flexibility to kind of move some things around as the market adjusts. So right now, there is a limit for a maximum number of units. I believe it's 2,850 units, and so we can't exceed that. So by putting the townhomes on this location, it's going to reduce where we could put homes in the future phases of the development. So it's still going to be at that limit. All we're doing is kind of shifting where those houses are going to go within the planned unit development.
Ms. Schuler, Ms. Borst, any other questions? I don't know what you want.
Hi, my name is Bianca Basil. I'm also a resident of Oak Island, 209 Northeast 61st Street.
Bianca, last name, please.
Basil. B-A-Z-I-L.
And you are a resident of the town?
I am.
Ms. Bennington, any standing questions? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Basil.
My question is similar in nature, although it brings in additional questions with, number one, affordability. When we are told affordable, more affordable housing, it doesn't necessarily in the end mean exactly the same thing, and we are already in a dire need of affordable housing or just housing available for people currently living in the town. Additionally, with the delay in expansion of 211, we are now bringing in additional homes into the area that is already adding to the infrastructure that is lacking at the moment. And while we do have sewer, you have sewer and water taps, the use of residential versus commercial is quite different. And unless we do have a catch-up in the actual systems, we are going to be suffering as residents of the island in general. So can those issues be touched upon? And, you know, considerable commercial loss without actually clarifying what the commercial loss is leaves a lot of questions in the end, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Basil, I just want to make sure that you're not asking the applicant any question that--
I am asking the question of, you know, if we're losing commercial, we're adding additional residential for where residential is currently there. We do have builders already building. We're not adding to the tax base and the commercial tax base, and we are going to be taxing existing infrastructure, whereas we're still lacking in infrastructure that is slow to come in, that we're constantly getting delays. Four to five years now, tomorrow it might be six to eight, but yet we're adding additional bodies to our roads to just the current situation, right? So we're taxing without adding anything to help alleviate that.
I'll let Ms. Bennington, do you understand the question, or do you need clarification on her question? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Basil.
I appreciate it. Thank you. If I understand correctly, she's asking if the added residential is not, is going to put and, going to tax the existing infrastructure. Is that oversimplification?
Well, I don't want to speak for her. You can ask her--
Well, there are limitations to commercial, the planned commercial, right? Which commercial taxes the infrastructure much less than residential, so now we're moving back to having additional residential versus a commercial which adds tax base, but does-- tax base, but does, so residential taxes our infrastructure versus commercial, where it can more?
Well, I think that you're forgetting that the initial component was residential over retail. So, the MX parcels that were approved to begin with, the MX1 and the MX2, had both residential and commercial. So, we're not taking away commercial and adding residential. We're simply splitting the two. And the eight acres, they're being split eight and four, so that eight will remain commercial and only four will be residential. As for the taxing on the infrastructure, I can't really say, except for to say that, again, this is a phased concept plan and that all development, actual construction, tapping into the sewer, to the water, to the stormwater, has to be approved by the town of Oak Island before our developer can do anything.
And just in the affordable aspect of it, when it's often mentioned, that's always what is mentioned as a selling point, the affordable, more affordable option. And then we get the townhouses, and the townhouses tend to be more expensive, simple values.
I don't, the, the town.
I'm sorry. I wanna make sure we have a record. Ms. Stites, can you capture these questions?
I can hear her, but nobody watching at home is gonna be able to hear her.
Okay.
And it's not gonna be audible on the recording.
Okay. Could you come back to the lectern? And folks, understand that there are two things. One, there are people at home watching. And two, we have to have a intelligible record of these proceedings. So, I apologize for having you come back up, but we need to be able to hear you.
My concern is that it is often mentioned that the affordable portion of any developer coming in is always mentioned as a selling point. And then, in the end, we end up with developer, developments that cost substantially more than what we currently already have. And we are in, in substantial need. We, we are losing people who have been here for many years and who are actually supporting the community by working here, who don't have a place to live and who are moving away. And we're, we're having issues with hiring. We have businesses who don't have people to work. Why? Because it's substantially getting more and more expensive without any options for people to, to live. So, how are you going to work if you can't afford to live? And we're, it's always, the, the affordable housing portion is always being pushed by developers to make it more appealing. And in the end, none of that exists. And so, we're, all our services are taxed, our business, our, our, meaning stressed. And we're, our, our roads and our services are all suffering. We're getting more and more people and nothing to support that. So, you know, there was no demand for, for, I, I might've, I might've missed it, but something about the, the rental market, that we no longer need the, we, we are in, we very much need rentals, but we need rentals that are more affordable in nature. And is there going to be a split of, you know, even 20% of something that would allow people to actually live here, people who work here? And not just people who are going to come here for a second home, or for a vacation, or whatever it might be. So, the focus is to focus actually on the people who are currently live here and not just investing for investment purposes. That's my concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bennington?
I can generally answer that question. I don't, if I, if I mention the word affordable in my presentation, my apologies. I, I don't think I did. I'm not really sure. I understand what she's saying, but in relation to this project, what you saw in the slide with the, the 22 units, that's as, that's as detailed as we've gotten. I don't think that we've advertised for these, these products for sale. I don't think we've advertised this project at all. In fact, I, I asked my client if they wanted to send a site plan through with this, and they weren't, they just weren't that far along. So, I don't, my general understanding is that the price point of the townhomes will be lower than that of the single-family residences that are in Pine Forest Plantation. But as to what the, what the cost will be, I, I do not know. But again, we think this is a good product to go with what is already there, because there are single-family residences and there are, there is the rental component with the multifamily that's already been developed. So, I don't know if that answers your question. I, I, we're just, we're just not that far along to be able to give you a, a price point.
Basically, just wanted to mention to the board if you'd say, in general.
Mr. Eads, is that something I can stick to?
Ms. Basil, I can't even read my own handwriting. Could you pronounce your last name again for me, ma'am?
Basil.
Basil. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Stites, I believe Ms. Basil just reiterated from the audience that she just wanted the board to hear her concerns and to ask those questions. So, would anyone else like to speak, provide testimony regarding this matter?
Mr. Eads, is it appropriate for me to speak to that issue?
Ma'am, if you'll come up, get sworn in first?
Mr. Eads, if I could, also, I have two names on the public hearings sign-in sheet, but they did not indicate which public hearings they wanted to speak for. So, if I could call out their names and make sure it's not for this hearing?
That's fine.
Okay. I have a Mary Beth Arrington.
Yeah, I think that's on the wrong sheet. I'm gonna wait for the public comments.
Okay. So, I'll put you on the other sheet. Thank you. And Brendan Vaughn?
Also.
On the other sheet? Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
All in favor that the testimony given to the town council during this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
Hello, ma'am. Could you identify yourself?
Yes.
By name?
Yep. My name is Donna Means. I live on Northeast 37th Street. And I agree.
Ms. Bennington, any standing questions? And I, I did not catch that name. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Donna.
Donna.
Means. M-E-A-N-S.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, Ms. Means.
Okay. So, I agree with the lady, Ms. Ms. Basil, that there needs to be some affordable housing. Unfortunately, with the cost of sewer, the cost of taxes, and I can just imagine that when we get the new rec center and all of that stuff, taxes are going to go up again. And so, owners that rent their houses long-term to people who stay here and work here, they can't afford to go below the, the median rate for rentals. And I was thinking about it today. I have a two-bedroom house that's been completely redone, and I charge 1,650 a month for that, which people are beating down my door because they say that's really cheap. People who are working, even making $15 an hour, cannot afford to pay 1,800 or 2,000 a month, and the water bill, and the electric bill, and buy groceries, and so on and so forth. It, it's just impossible. So, I think there needs to be, like, maybe a rent control or something like that, because, and I appreciate that the builder needs to make money on their product, too. But we live here. And although I'm not in the market to rent, I feel for the people who have children and are working for 15 bucks an hour. They can't possibly afford 1,800 or 2,000 a month. Okay. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, did you want any cross-examination? Ms. Bennington? Okay. Madam Mayor, you were about to ask a question, but I was going to say, if no one else wishes to speak, the board can certainly call someone back up and ask questions after you've heard, since you've heard all the evidence, if that's what you were gonna ask.
No, I was gonna speak, if I may, to the, the issue regarding more cost-effective, the need for more cost-effective housing in, in Oak Island. I know that the residents' experience with the apartments in Pine Forest, those rents went up exponentially. So, we're making an appeal to the developer to be sensitive to their pricing structure so that we have workforce in the island. We're able for, to maintain the environment that we have and provide a workforce for the services that the town provides, as well as for the other commercial spaces that you're building and will need employees for. It's just a, an ask regarding a sensitivity, because people who moved to Pine Forest were, that gave me input, were shocked at the increase in the apartment rentals and forced a number of them to seek other, more effective, cost-effective. So, that's the only comment that I want to make as someone who represents the people of Oak Island.
Oh. Ms. Bennington, would anyone on your team like to address that concern? And if you would, sir, identify yourself.
Kevin Henry with Pine Forest Development Company.
Thank you, sir. Proceed.
And I, I do understand that certainly affordability is an issue. The apartments, I apologize, the apartments are actually separately owned from Pine Forest Development Company. That is a totally separate entity from the entity requesting this tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. You, obviously, the, the board will have an opportunity to deliberate the evidence. So, unless there's any additional questions, we'll move forward to deliberations. This year, I've, I'm advising that instead of closing the hearing, we just move forward with deliberations, because in the past, you may recall, we've had to reopen it because a question will come up through deliberations. So, we'll just pause it for now and move forward to deliberations, unless there are any other members of the audience who wish to speak. Ms. Bennington, you wanna do a summation of any type, or are you good to go? You don't have to. Okay. All right. You can find the criteria on page 32 of the agenda packet. I wanna, before we get to the deliberations, I just want to inventory the evidence for the applicant's benefit. We first heard from Mr. Kirkland on behalf of town staff. We've received into evidence Exhibit 1, which was pages 26 through 37 of the agenda packet pertaining to this application. Ms. Bennington had an opportunity to look at that packet to ensure the documents she thought were in there, were in there, and they were indeed in there. Is that correct, Ms. Bennington? Okay. We then heard from Attorney Maggie Bennington on behalf of the applicant. She generally described the proposed amendment. We received into Exhibit 2, a 30, give or take, slide PowerPoint without objection. We then heard from Mr. Brad Schuler, who qualified as an expert in the field of planning. We then heard from Ms. Sharon Borst, who asked the applicant questions. Those questions were answered by Mr. Schuler. We then, then heard from Ms. Bianca Basil. She likewise had some questions for the applicant. They were answered by Ms. Bennington. We then heard from Ms. Donna Means. She provided testimony. The mayor then made a statement and asked a question concerning affordable housing, which was answered by Mr. Kevin Henry, who is associated with the applicant. All of these witnesses were sworn in and subject to both cross-examination and questions from the board. Ms. Bennington, does that summary or inventory of the evidence reconcile with your recollection?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. We can go ahead and start deliberating, ma'am.
Mr. Eads, do we need a motion before we deliberate?
That's what I was saying, I, I think, and I've seen other towns.
Just dispose with that and go right to deliberations.
We're just gonna keep it open. That way, we don't have to keep opening, closing, opening, closing.
Sounds good. Thank you.
That's my recommendation, at least.
I appreciate it.
Deliberations?
I'm good.
Anyone?
Good.
Very motion. Do you wanna discuss the evidence at all, as it relates to the criteria?
Anyone?
I just have a comment, and I hope it'll be reflected in, in the record. I believe the attorney for Pine Forest used the term townhouses would be more affordable than single-family homes, and that's, that's very logical. The issue of affordable housing is quite apart from that.
Yes.
And it's going to require county and state intervention, along with local efforts to resolve the, what is a very clear and pressing issue here and throughout the county. So, just so we're clear on that, and I think you did clarify it. Thank you, Council.
Yes. That's why I asked for cost-effective.
I would, I would just add to that quickly. You know, the mixed-use did allow for both commercial and residential stacked, essentially, right? Residents on top. That would be more conducive to a, more of a rental marketplace, whereas moving to strictly single-family townhomes would encourage homeownership. Again, aside from trying to define that as affordable, it's a different price point. It's a different product within the development before you could move into a single-family detached home. It gives you another option. So, I think it's an encouraging proposal.
Thank you for that.
Well, there's an application. The criteria, again, can be found on page 32. Unless the board has any additional questions from any of those who've provided testimony, a motion would be in order if you believe that the applicant has met the criteria with the competent evidence received during this hearing. If you feel otherwise, a motion to deny the application would be in order.
Mr. Eads, is your intention for them to, to take action on the matter and then close the public hearing? Or how do you want them to do that, order-wise?
Well, we can do it either way.
Okay.
But if you're ready to make a motion, if you're, if someone's ready to make a motion, we can go ahead and close the evidentiary portion.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Ms. Stites.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, amended SUP.
Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Ms. Bennington, I'd ask you to draft the order granting, and then if you'll email that to me, and we'll get it executed. I thank all of those who participated tonight.
We move to public hearing number three, to receive citizen comments on proposed text amendments to Articles 2, 3, 4, and 5 of the UDO.
I'm gonna get Mr. Mike out here to switch the PowerPoint back and be ready to rock and roll. I still got this on the screen.
Okay. I'm hoping it'll pop up on the screen, then we'll get started. All right. So, this is the third public hearing that was included in your agenda packet. This is a proposed text amendment to Articles 2, 3, 4, and 5 of the Unified Development So, you last heard a, a part of this work in November. The Planning Board is currently engaged in the exercise to audit the Unified Development Ordinance. The town has contracted with the Council of Governments to facilitate that audit. As a part of the Planning Board deliberations, they came to a consensus to advance simple strike-through removals and small modifications to the ordinance as the process is ongoing to essentially weed out some of the, the low-hanging fruit. to essentially weed out some of the low-hanging fruit, as it were, and go ahead and do some ordinance maintenance as we're going through the process of auditing the UDO. So, this is the second round. You heard the first round in November. It was kind of a small section because that meeting was rather short. This one's a bit longer. The Planning Board considered this round of recommendations at their November meeting, and they voted to initiate a text amendment and recommend the town council adopt the proposed amendments as drafted. And we'll very briefly summarize those amendments. The current ordinance does contain several sections that are already within the state statute, so it's redundant to include them in the ordinance, or they're contained somewhere else in the ordinance, or they're just out of date and it's something that's not even applicable anymore. So, we'll kind of go through some of these pretty quickly. Section 2.1, 4.3, that deals with irregularly shaped lots. The proposal there would add some clarification as far as how staff is intended to interpret those. Section 2.18 deals with property dedicated for private use. This is redundant with state statute and private property law. There's no reason for that statement to be included in the ordinance. Section 2.19 is also redundant with state statutes, as forestry activities are regulated by the state, not by the local government. Section 3.1, 2.3, we've got a lot of numbers up there, requires an applicant to conduct a sketch plan review with the UDO administrator. So, the detail here is that that's a requirement. So, certainly in this jurisdictions, and even in other jurisdictions I worked in, when someone submits for a site plan or any type of development, or major development, it goes through a technical review committee, and that's what we do here in the town. Somebody makes the application, we send it out to several review agencies and provide them comments. In that instance, the sketch plan being mandatory is redundant because you're already submitting a plan to me, you're already going to get comments back. The sketch plan is just an extra step to do the same thing I'm going to do when you get to the TRC level. Staff certainly will continue to provide that should the board approve this, but it wouldn't be a requirement anymore. If an applicant wants to meet with me and review a sketch plan and get comments back, I'm always more than happy to provide that as a service from the town. But there was an issue with making that a requirement. Moving on, section 3.1, 2.12 is redundant with the state statutes. It requires that the UDO administrator maintain a comprehensive plan. It's actually the duty of the town as a whole to maintain a comprehensive land use plan, and that's, once again, part of the state statutes. Section 3.3 relates to the duties of the Planning Board. Several of these are, once again, redundant with state statutes or other policies that are in place with the town. Staff did have an issue with the section 3.3, 3.5. The Council of Governments and the Planning Board recommended that the general duties of the Planning Board be located within the Unified Development Ordinance, currently there in Chapter Two of the General Code, which kind of spells out the duties of all the boards in the town. Their recommendation is essentially to consolidate those things. However, staff believes that they're better consolidated in Chapter Two of the General Ordinance as opposed to within the UDO. So, that's the one section that was forwarded along that staff disagrees with. At issue is essentially, for just a way of metaphor, Mr. Kelly is my supervisor. If he wants to change my duty, he changes my duty. He doesn't have to necessarily ask me what I think about it. If the town council moves the Planning Board duties to within the UDO, those become subject to a recommendation from the Planning Board. So, should this board want to change those duties, you would have to first ask the Planning Board for their recommendation, which is unusual setup, in my opinion. But there's certainly some value in consolidating those duties.
In addition, you'd have to have a public hearing.
Correct.
Because of the Planning Board, then you'd have to have a public hearing.
If it were in the UDO.
If it were in the UDO, I guess.
And that is what section, Matt?
3.3, 3.5.
Okay.
Right in the middle of the page.
I'm with you. All six red lines.
So, staff would recommend not including that, and we have a motion crafted if you should choose to exclude that recommendation. So, moving on, section 3.4 contains, deals mostly with the Board of Adjustment, and it contains a section related to special use permits. The Board of Adjustment does not currently hear special use permits. As you saw just a few minutes ago, this town council hears the special use permit, so that reference should be removed. And once again, section 3.5, which deals with town councils' duties, several of those sections are already included in the state statutes that grants authority to town councils, including them in the ordinance, once again, is redundant. Article four, the main change to Article four deals with something we just talked about, which is the case law regarding special use permits. So, right now, our ordinance has several parameters for a special use permit when we know that the Court of Appeals has essentially said you should use these four criteria. So, that would modify that section to include those four criteria that the Court of Appeals has center-applicable. And then it deals with some issues regarding notices and permit expiration. Then finally, I believe we're near the end here, Article five contains sections related to the applicability of the development review process, which, once again, is covered elsewhere in the ordinance. It doesn't necessarily have to be in two places at once, creates confusion if we want to change any of those things, to have it in multiple places. The Planning Board also recommended removing the provision for our final zoning certificate. So, just by way of explanation, when someone comes in to get a certificate of occupancy, that's the last thing you get before you can open your doors. Zoning goes out and checks all of our requirements at that point. So, really, this requirement for a formal final zoning certificate is redundant with our already existing process of getting a certificate of occupancy. The certificate of occupancy certainly serves as that final zoning certificate. In addition, the Planning Board recommending removing the requirement for construction drawings to be submitted concurrently with a site plan. The issue there is typically, when you come in with a site plan, it's kind of a little bit of a higher-level review to check zoning requirements, planning requirements. Most places will not dig down into full engineered construction drawings until they are sure that their site plan meets the base zoning requirements. So, certainly, that can come after, but to have them come concurrently with the site plan is a bit much. Typically, construction drawings are reviewed in addition by the Building and Inspections Department, Public Works, Stormwater. I certainly don't have any engineers on my staff that, you know, could review a construction drawing and really provide adequate feedback on something like that. So, the Planning Board, as I mentioned, reviewed these recommendations at their November seventeenth meeting and voted to initiate a text amendment and recommend town council approve the text amendment, finding that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which encourages the UDO to be simpler, more flexible, more easily administered, and the removal of outdated standards and elimination of confusing and contradictory requirements, as well as reasonable in the public interest because the proposed text clarifies the standards of the UDO for both citizens and staff. Staff recommendation would be to approve the proposed amendments, with the exception of the amendment to section 3.3, 3.5. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Real quick, Matt, on 3.3, 3.2.
Okay.
You deleted, "There shall be a quorum of four members for the purpose of taking any official motion required by this ordinance." You deleted that because that's a given?
Yes, that's correct. You can't do any of that. Several of these things are, these are just automatically applicable quarums, et cetera. You can't take an official action of the board without a quorum being present.
Any other questions for Matt?
I have a question, just to ensure that we have full understanding here. So, the way I'm reading this is the Council of Government is recommending 3.3, 3.5, but administration is opposing it. Can you explain that that's rather unusual juxtaposition there?
Yeah, so, the intent of the Council of Governments would be to consolidate. There is one duty that the Planning Board has that is included in the UDO, and it is the ability for them to initiate a text or a zoning map amendment. That was included in the UDO when the town updated those ordinance in relation to the new general statute in the government's planning, Chapter 160D. My understanding of the intent of the Council of Governments is to consolidate all the duties and powers of the Planning Board in one place. Since we're auditing the UDO, the recommendation was to put it into the UDO to accomplish that consolidation. However, as I mentioned, staff has, saw a bit of a logistical issue with that wherein, you know, the Planning Board has to be asked their recommendation wherein those duties are changed, any of the duties of the Planning Boards, and the town council approved this. So, certainly consolidating them would be a good idea, but consolidating them in General Code, Chapter Two, would be the staff preference.
So, translation would be that the Planning Board would become an autonomous or semi-autonomous body apart from town council and the administration?
No.
It's the opposite of that. Well, not the exact opposite, if I may, Matt. If this elected body wants to change their duties, and those duties are found in the UDO under Chapter 160D of the general statutes, those propose, you have to get the Planning Board's recommendations on that first. Then you have to have a public hearing on that. So, it would make the Planning Board less autonomous from this board because this board would not have to seek their input on what the board wants their duties to be.
Fair enough, thank you.
And I concur with Matt, staff's recommendation to not, to have it in Chapter Two.
That's correct.
Thank you, counsel.
And if the board wants to consolidate those duties, we can certainly bring a separate text amendment to move that one straggler that's still in the UDO into Chapter Two at a later date.
Sounds like the tail wagging the dog. Exactly.
So, Matt, where we've removed text here because it's in the state statutes is, that may or may not be obvious to someone who's looking at these records. So, will we have a reference to the state statutes where those laws are applied?
Sure.
I'm thinking of someone, me, a fight like myself.
Right. Certainly, I've seen it done that way. The problem with having even a reference to the state statutes is if the General Assembly in their wisdom decides to change those statutes or move them around, then we could be caught behind the eight ball. You know, certainly, if there's a section that we think applies to something and it's amended later on to cover something else entirely, we would not be in any position. You know, we'd be in a pretty bad spot, in my opinion. So, it's best to leave the statutes and the ordinances separate where we can.
How would they know to look there?
You would contact your local planning department, and we will help you out gladly with any state statutory requirements.
Okay, that's fine, as long as it's not a mystery.
And there's also many qualified individuals in the private sector who can help them navigate some of these things, as you saw earlier tonight.
That's all right.
So, Matt, other than 3.3, 3.5, the staff recommends the other changes.
Oh, yes, sir.
As housekeeping for the most part.
Yes, sir, absolutely, that's right.
I'll move the motion to approve the amendments to Articles two, three, four, and five, with the exception of proposed amendment to section 3.3, 3.5 of the UDO and the adopted associated consistency statement.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public hearing four. Oh, wait. That's right, okay, we didn't take input on that, I forgot to ask. Public hearing four, the purpose of the public hearing is to receive citizens' comments on proposed amendments to 7.43 of the town's UDO. This has to do with temporary food businesses. Matt, back to you.
Right, back to me. As you just mentioned, is a proposed text amendment to section 7.43 of the UDO. Some background on this topic, in October of last year, the Planning Board discussed potentially revising the standards for food trucks within the UDO. The consensus of the board was to review a draft of some potential changes at the November meeting. At their November meeting, the board reviewed a draft of changes, and the board voted to initiate a text amendment and recommend town council adopt the proposed amendments. Before I get started into the meat of this, I did want to touch base on, the town has had some issue with a couple of different classifications of business. We have food trucks, which are in the UDO, and another chapter of the General Code of Ordinances. We have business licenses for things called itinerant merchants and peddlers as well. All three of those things are separate entities, they're defined differently within our ordinance. However, over the past year or so, they've gotten co-mingled a bit. So, the idea here is to not only separate those things out and make sure they're well-regulated, but also to make sure that they're kind of regulated on a somewhat of an even plane. We did have a question from one of the council members prior to about how many permits had been issued for some of these. We've had zero food truck permits issued in the last year. We've had nine itinerant merchant permits. Now, an itinerant merchant is someone who sets up on a piece of property typically to sell merchandise. Three of those should likely have been food truck permits, but they were issued as itinerant merchant permits. We had ten peddler's permits. We sold all of our peddler's permits for the year. Those are push carts where you see people pushing something down the beach. They might be selling merchandise, ice cream, bottles of water, you know, Italian ice, that kind of thing, but we did use all of those peddler's permits. So, knowing that, and knowing that there were some issues, the Planning Board discussed those and wanted to make some recommendations. So, staff came back with kind of three models for changes that could be made to those regulations. Bear with me here. The first one was an incremental change. Our current ordinance covers things like spacing between what we might consider a brick-and-mortar business and food truck restaurants, has hours of operation limitations, has seasonal operation requirements, has a number of permits per year that you could issue. What the board looked at was, and I'll kind of summarize these things very briefly, if I can get to my ordinance section. Bear with me here. Here we go. So, the board recommended the current distance between a food truck and a competing business, what we typically might consider a brick-and-mortar restaurant, is 500 feet. The Planning Board recommended reducing that down to 100 feet. They recommended increasing the maximum number of licenses that could be issued to food trucks. Currently, we have six available in the ordinance. As I mentioned, I sold none last year. They would recommend increasing that to 10, and then making the permit valid good for one year instead of a seasonal. Currently, it's March 1 to November 30 is the season for food trucks. Their recommendation was to open that up to a permit that's good for one year. Finally, the hours of operation, currently is set at 9 to 5 p.m. The recommendation from the Planning Board was to move that from 7 to 10, as a note that matches what itinerant merchants are currently allowed. Itinerant merchants are allowed 7 a.m. to 10 p.m. The Planning Board recommended, 7 a.m. to 10 p.m. The Planning Board recommended the same hours of operations for food trucks.
Seven days a week.
Yes, there was no day limitation on any of this. Yeah, so, the board recommended that the permitting requirements for food trucks be aligned with the itinerant merchants. They considered a potential for a food truck rodeo that would allow a private property owner who owns commercially zoned property to develop a piece of property that would allow multiple food trucks. So, you see some of these in jurisdictions around where there's basically a site, you might have parking, outdoor seating, et cetera, and you might have a rotation of food trucks come in. So, staff includes some language in that. It would still be subject to Article 10 of the UDO, which is our performance standards that deals with things like driveways, parking, pedestrian access, landscaping. All those requirements would be applicable, should the board choose to do that. And then finally, the Planning Board considered allowing existing site to have a permanent food truck location. So, right now, you might have a business, and you say, "I know I want to have a food truck every Friday. I'm going to go ahead and set aside a spot." You could submit a site plan to staff, we could review it, make sure it meets all the distance and spacing requirements, and then that could be your food truck spot. If a food truck has a license to operate within the town, they could occupy that and know that they're consistent with the ordinance. It would be much simpler for them because they just need to get the permit, they know where they're going, we know that they've got a spot dedicated for it, we know it meets all the distance. all the distance requirements. So the planning board reviewed all of these recommendations at their November meeting, and they voted to initiate a text amendment and recommend town council approve the proposed text amendment, finding it's consistent with a comprehensive plan that encourages the town to develop food truck regulations, as well as consider a town center with a mix of uses, including residential, retail, restaurants, and entertainment, as well as reasonable and in the public interest, because the proposed amendments retain safety and access-related standards. We didn't change any spacing to parking, or pedestrian, or fire hydrants, all that remained the same, but it does increase business expansion opportunities and services for the public. In conversations with some feedback we've got from some of the council, there are some additional considerations that you could make along with this. The current recommendation from the planning board has a one-year valid validation for permits that are good for just one year from the day you get it. The board could consider just having a calendar year where you have 10 permits available, so say January 1 to December 31, we have 10 permits. So even if you get it six months in the year and still expires December 31, you've got to come back on January 1 to get your new permit. Council could consider allowing a food truck at a business with a valid health inspection. So if you're running a restaurant and you're going to be closed for lunch, and somebody wants to have a food truck in your parking lot where you're closed, the council could consider allowing that regardless of the spacing requirements, and just say, this is already a food, this is already a restaurant, it's closed, we're going to allow a food truck to come here when they're closed, essentially, even if it's next to another restaurant. And then finally, council could consider lowering the distance requirements further than what the planning board recommended. We did look at several jurisdictions, 500 is by far the highest of any place we looked at by a wide margin. Our neighbor, Southport's distance requirement is 50 feet, so even lower than what the planning board recommended for food trucks. So staff's recommendation is to approve the amendments recommended by the planning board. Certainly, if you wanted to amend that to include any of those considerations, we had it at the very end there, you certainly could. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions for Matt?
An easy one, Matt.
Sure.
Permits that were issued as itinerant merchants, and there's been nine of those.
Nine, that's right.
And maybe they were issued wrong, and some of those were food trucks, but they're now safe because, as an itinerant merchant, they fall within these guidelines.
So, the idea here, yes, the idea is to get those closer aligned so that a food truck gets a food truck permit and doesn't fall under some other designation. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, the fact that we had food trucks that were falling under an itinerant merchant permit, to me means that our, and we sold zero food truck permits, means that our ordinances are, you know, in need of some work, because you should call it what it is, and the ordinances should make it so that it is what it is, essentially.
I can think of, and I'm very much in favor of allowing the food trucks to function. I can only think of three food trucks, so I'll name them. Drifters, or Sea Dogs Hot Dogs, or Wallace Catering, they don't have to go out and get a new permit, now they're already in compliance.
Josephs.
No, they, their permit ended November the 30th.
Yeah, the itinerant merchant permits on the 30th, so anybody who had, who was operating under that would need to come get a food truck permit.
Everybody's going to have to start all over.
To the town council approve this, but it's a $50 permit.
Good deal.
So the vendor is from elsewhere, right? So let's say Josephs, it's not in the town of Oak Island, they would have to have a local permit to operate here.
That's correct, yeah. And we'd only have, once again, we have 10 available if you took the planning board's recommendation, and currently we have six.
I don't have anything to do with Wallace Catering, I know, it rents from.
And I'm going to ask a question, I already know the answer to, but for the sake of the public, have we gone out to existing restaurants and asked what concerns that they may have about making these changes and expanding the opportunity for food trucks to exist?
Sure, staff has not done that. Certainly, this is a public hearing, if anyone's interested in that type of thing, they're more than welcome to come speak to that effect. The fact that we haven't had any food truck permits right now, I think it would be a good idea to at least consider making some amendments, see how it works, and maybe go through a little bit of time and see what kind of feedback we get once we've made those recommendations. Because right now, like I said, not only do we not have any food truck permits, you know, the season's over, so, you know, it's difficult to gauge anything that's happening right now, yeah.
I know some restaurants that don't currently have food trucks or planning food trucks, so.
Right, that's right.
Counsel, any more questions for Matt?
No, but a comment. I think from a process point of view, it makes sense to differentiate food trucks from itinerant merchants from peddlers, and also to move towards consistency in terms of standards. That I agree with. I think from a process standpoint, though, the original food truck ordinance was written in a highly protective way. It was designed to protect brick and mortar, and I think from a process point of view, we should have talked to some brick and mortar people in the chamber to ascertain whether this is too much. It clearly is promoting a different kind of orientation. And if the goal is to increase business and to identify clearly in the ordinance what's a food truck and what are the conditions, it achieves that, but I think this will come as quite a surprise to some of our brick and mortar restaurants. And I'm wondering about the 100-foot standard, whether or not they should be consulted about that. That's a huge change from 500 feet to 100. So, that's more of a comment than a question, and I realize that. This will be a considerable shift in terms of policy.
Matt, could you go ahead and explain, you said 500 was kind of an outlier, way out there, and I know 100, the 100-foot may seem like it's impactful, but there is a significant reason behind the recommendation to look at 50 feet. Would you mind elaborating on that? I know you and I have talked about it, but the 50-foot mark is a significant measurement, if you could elaborate on that.
Yeah, so 50 feet is the typical width of a right-of-way. Typical width of a right-of-way for like a public street, you know, your neighborhood streets are usually 50-foot of right-of-way there, so that's why it's a good increment. And once again, it's used even here locally, or semi-locally, in other jurisdictions. I think 100 feet, when I looked at other jurisdictions, I believe Wilmington had 100 feet distance, but Southport, and I believe a couple others, I know Southport for sure had 50 feet as well, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion before discussion?
To close the public hearing.
Yes, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All, second, all in favor? Thank you, thanks for the reminder. Is there a motion to precede discussion?
I would like to make the motion to approve the amendments to section 7.43, but to further amend those to include the 50-foot measurement, as well as the certificate from the health department designation that was on the bullet. I don't agree with establishing a hard end-of-life for the permit, because I think a permit should be under a rolling calendar year. If someone wants to start a food truck business and there's an available permit and it's May, why would we force them to come back in November and renew that permit? They should be allowed to come back the following May and renew their permit. So I wasn't in agreement with trying to establish a defined calendar period for expiration. I think it should just be on a rolling annual basis, but I do like the 50-foot distance, just like Southport has, and I like the idea of if there's food service there, they have a health certificate to serve food. When it's closed, a food truck should be able to serve food there as well, at that location.
And that would be section 7.43.2 would be what would?
That's correct.
Councilman Martin's recommending amending.
So you're saying if someone gets a permit in January, their permit doesn't expire until the following January. If they get it in March, it expires the following March.
It's an annual permit.
As long as you don't have more than 10 at one time.
That's correct.
So they have a chance to renew before another one could come in.
Or if they don't renew, it opens up a spot.
I got it, okay, I'm okay with that.
Is that a motion, Mr. Martin?
It was.
It was, is there a second?
If I could follow it, I'll second it.
All right, discussion. Are you ready to vote? All in favor? It carries. unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Won't sit down for a while, I'll be back.
You will be back. We have a request for a break.
I'm so moved.
I don't believe we need a motion, do we? So, great, let's take five minutes, if we can keep it to that, I'd appreciate it, we've still got a long way to go. Call a meeting back to order. We'll start with adjustment and approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, counsel, to the agenda you'd like to request?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, and all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Public comment. So in this section, I think most people are accustomed, please present your name, tell us where you live within the town of Oak Island, and I just want to remind you that you have three minutes, and that's only because it's a time that's pretty, I can't think of the word, anyway, it's a used standard, thank you, that's the word I was looking for. You win. And I ask for courtesy, and let's move forward. Lisa.
Madam Mayor, counsel, thank you. I'm Gerald Edwards, 108 Northeast 47th Street. I'm speaking about paid parking. It's time for some plain and direct talk. Paid parking, the way it's been laid out and presented here, is a terrible idea for our community. The primary benefit will be to the selected parking vendor. Contour's document that was put forth is filled with fluff to try and justify paid parking. Where are the statistics on the dynamic upsurge in visitors? The town already has a traffic plan, there was no traffic plan in the RFP, they're all fluff words. Contour's talks about safeguarding property rights. I thought that's what code enforcement, the police department was for. Citizens have been led astray by the sham and charade carried out in this very room as parts of the contour document were skimmed through at a very high level. Taxpayers were led to believe they would still enjoy reserved parking spaces. Up to 300 of them were discussed. Somehow now, based on the information that was posted for this meeting, that's been changed to none. Apparently, you'd like residents to compete with tourists, weekly runners, and other residents of the county that come to the beach for the day. That's a hard no for me. Additionally, why would you take on the wooded section for police enforcement at the same time you're attempting to do all the rest of this? We already have laws, let's enforce them. It appears you're trying to make Oak Island like somewhere else. Why? How about some real safety improvements, like crosswalks on Oak Island Drive and Beach Drive, more handicap mats at the dune walk-through access points for us old folks and the handicap folks, lower speed limits in several more areas, and concentration on LSV safety violations? There are some of you up there that I'm surprised have bought into this, having been longtime residents here. You already, you really need to ask yourself if this is a legacy that you want to leave this town. Past councils have made some very bad decisions for this town, and we're still paying for them. The auto parking company that's been selected is filled with former IBM employees. Mr. Martin is an IBM employee. I know there is probably nothing nefarious here, but if a vote is taken, I'm calling on you to recuse yourself from voting, to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest. Please stop trying to fix what's not broken. Most people in this town do not want this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
This is Andy Spradley, I live at 114 Southeast 6th Street. I am representing the Oak Island Beach Preservation. Let's see, there we go. First of all, we would like to thank the city of Oak Island, all the different departments, all the volunteers that helped make the Christmas parade a great event. I know it seems like it was ages ago, but it was right down the street. Personally, I'd like to acknowledge our police department, who managed the flow and kept us all safe and kept the chaos to a minimum. They also helped me, if you see the first photo, the lady with the big orange, that's a pelican costume. She has, I will not give her age, let's just say she's very experienced in life, she has been to every Christmas parade that they've ever held. And partly because of some of your officers, they helped me get her to where she needed to be with a minimum of effort, so thank you. And they kept us safe from the Grinch, too. We want to let everyone know that we're planning a wine tasting and auction at the 801 Event Center. Now, this is going to be happening on Saturday, April 8, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. We're still in the beginning stages, so please, check our Facebook page, check our webpage for details as it becomes closer to the date, we would love to see you there. This is, we haven't been able to do this because of the pestilence that came upon our shores, but we're trying to get right back into it, and we would love to see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Paddock?
My name is Fred Paddock, and I live on Northeast 77th Street. I concur with what the former resident just said about paid parking. I figured it was already a done deal, so I didn't prepare anything like that. And I'd like to thank the council and committees for all your effort that you give in keeping our community a great place to live. I hope that you continue to hear our voices and do the right thing. As we move ahead, maybe I should say, if we move ahead with paid parking, I would like to see some spaces still reserved for residents. It's been my experience at times that if it weren't for resident spaces, I would not have had a parking spot when going to the beach during vacation season. I don't think there will be fewer visitors due to paid parking, so first come, first served will be a problem for us finding a space. Now, this is important to me for several reasons, but the number one reason is that my wife has mobility issues, so it's necessary to park as close as possible to the actual beach to minimize her walking distance. Now, this brings up my second comment concerning handicap parking. I don't think the accesses with handicapped spaces are very accommodating to persons with walking problems. My wife is able to walk some, but relatively long distances and inclines make it difficult My wife is able to walk some, but relatively long distances and inclines make it difficult and often impossible for her to navigate to the beach, even if there is a sand mat in place. It's because of the, the inclines and, and the distance. I think it would be ideal if the Kesia Access Parking was at least half handicap spaces due to its being very level and a short distance to the actual beach area. I wonder if, seeing that there is a very large city lot near to it, the actual Kesia Access Lot could be designated handicap and resident parking only. It would also be helpful to have some combined reserved handicap resident spaces. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Carrie Lenzen.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carrie Lenzen, and I live at 340 Northeast 46th Street. And I'm going to speak about the paid parking contract. I did email everyone as well, so I'll, I'll go short so I can get more folks in tonight. Just quickly, wanted to go over and reiterate as well that the current proposed situation with residents sharing available parking spaces with visitors during peak season is not the ideal fit. We are removing town spaces for more general paid parking, which would only benefit our visitors or the parking company themselves, and so not really the Oak Island residents, who I hope we all are speaking for and wanting to impact and benefit with paid parking. I actually am a paid parking proponent. I think we should have some. However, the way that the contract is reading doesn't seem to benefit Oak Island residents. It benefits the company and our visitors. I think it's really important also, within the context of the contract, I'm trying to find my notes here. There's mentioned that there's possibility of annual passes being available to non-residents. I think we have to define who a non-resident really is. If they're a non-resident outside of Brunswick County, why would they need an annual pass to park at Oak Island? I can see Brunswick County residents who work here. Their employers may want to have, you know, provide an annual pass for them to park here to come to work. But other than that, I don't think we need non-residents to have annual passes. I think that we should look at our visitors to have daily an hour, keep our town signs up, keep our decal system in place, and still allow three registered vehicles for our town residents so we maintain consistency with less change to our town residents, and the overall paid parking ends up benefiting the town, including our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Romney Williams.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Council. My name's Romney Williams, and I'm on Northeast 47th Street, speaking in regards to the Par 3 Golf, and we have a presentation here. If somebody will change the thing there. Thank you. Okay, so this is just a recap of 2022. We have quite a few events to share that were successful. First, we had the Swing for Hope Challenge. There were 72 golfers that participated, and over $2,800 was raised for the charity Little Pink Houses of Hope. So that was a win. Next, we have the roadside directional sign that a lot of you hopefully have seen. It's, it's a, it's a large sign. It's well seen, and thanks again to the airport manager that helped us along with that. Ladies' Day, that's been a big success. On Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10:00 a.m., the ladies are offered a lesson with instructor John Winebar. We get nine holes, the lesson, for $11, and we've had a lot of newcomers and a lot of, uh, just new people every week joining up, so that's been a great thing for the golf course. Hopefully, people were able to see the golf cart decorated for the parade, so there was lots of merriment and joy from the committee members that were able to be involved with that and hopefully got us some more advertisement out there. We are presently working on a rack card to be distributed. It would be a two-sided color rack card to go into different businesses to further advertise the Par 3 Golf and all the wonderful things that we have going on. Next year, we'll be working on some other tournaments for charities. Also, we'll be working on clinics and summer camps for kids. And also, we will be trying to get sponsors to take down each of the 18 holes, some business sponsors. So, and newsletter hopefully will be generated to go out and keep everyone updated on the lovely happenings at the Par 3 Golf. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting to hear all of the new things happening with the golf course.
It is.
Hidden gem.
Pete Grenze.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, staff, and residents of Oak Island. My name's Pete Grenze. I'm the current chief of Oak Island Water Rescue, and I live at 233 Northeast 63rd. Well, as you know, in 2023, we were quite busy. We had a 33% increase in our call volume. With the amount of construction going on, we expect to be even busier in 2023. We were able to have an average of 10 members respond per call, which is pretty good considering we were not fully staffed all the year. Starting in 2023, we have a roster, a full roster of 24 rescue members and eight auxiliary. We're always looking for more auxiliary, and if we can see that our action gets busier, we may increase our rescue membership. We are committed to keep educating all residents and visitors about water safety. We will continue working with the National Weather Service in providing rip current reports so that everyone using our beaches can do so safely. And an update, since we implemented tracking our QR code, ironically, even though we don't provide any information on it, we are still getting hits, and we're at 46,000-plus hits on that QR code since May 30th. And if somebody says that doesn't make an impact, 46,000 people say otherwise, so. If you don't have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks for your service.
Darrell Boyle.
Good evening. Darrell Boyle, 216 Northeast 47th Street. It will come to, no one's surprised in this room or watching now or in the future that I am here to speak in opposition to the proposed parking ordinance and auto contract. Two primary reasons. One, it eliminates the reserved parking that we've had in place for a number of years for our town residents and property owners. And two, it proposes to make it illegal to park in the right-of-way, in the wooded section of town for six months out of the year from 9:00 to 5:00 every day. I seriously hope that you will reconsider what's before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Baker.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, good evening.
Fellow taxpayers, good evening.
My name is Gail Baker. I live at 110 Northeast 16th Street, and I've always been a proponent of paid parking, until now. And let me tell you why. It's been brought to my attention that, as others have stated, that you would be removing the resident parking. If the resident parking would have been enforced in the very, very beginning, there probably wouldn't even be a need for paid parking. However, it never was. And that's neither here nor there, but however, we still do need our resident parking. We should not have to scurry around like a bunch of rats as taxpayers of this town to find a parking spot, especially when we pay for a permit, which I don't know if the permits are going away, whether they're coming. You know, this looks totally different than what you all had proposed to us in the very beginning. It's, it's almost like a bait-and-switch gimmick. And I'm not for it. I'm absolutely not for it, and as you can tell, my fellow citizens and my fellow taxpayers are not for it. This needs to stop now. You need to go back to the drawing board. We are not for the proposal as it stands right now. Thank you. Thank you.
Brendan Vaughn. Okay. Glenn Baker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. I'm Glenn Baker. I live at 110 Northeast 16th Street. I'm here to talk about why I don't agree with the proposed paid parking that is now occurring, or what I've read. It seems like the town council suddenly switched what us residents wanted. As Darrell stated and as my wife stated, were those resident parking spaces on those beachfront accesses? And then the gentleman talked about also the handicap resident parking spaces. To us as taxpayers, and we pay a high tax rate in this town, unfortunately, that is something that I believe should stay, for us residents. I actually teach high school, and I listen to all my cadets talk about, hey, we love coming to the beach because it's free. We don't have to pay anything, and they know they can get me riled up on that subject every time, and I try not to, but it works. When it was first proposed, I thought the paid parking was to control traffic issues. The proposed development, and I can't think of the name right now, the proposed development that was coming in that had 7,200 houses, and we needed to put in some type of paid parking to get ahead of that, which was fine, and I understood, and I was in agreement with that. But now, all of a sudden, things are starting to switch on us, since my wife stole my line. I was going to say it was a bait-and-switch. And that's what we feel like. And it, it always feels like to us, or to me and my wife, that the residences are always pushed behind, and the tourists are put first ahead of us. It always feels that way, and I'm sure many other people feel the same way, too. So what I propose is, is we put a hold on this paid parking, go back to the drawing board, listen to what the residents and the people of the town of Oak Island are saying, and come back, and let's have another discussion. Why does it have to get pushed forward and pushed through this fast? What is stopping it, the slowing it down, and let's take another look at this, okay? Sometimes things come up that you're not thinking of, and I think that's exactly what occurred. Maybe we need to, you know, let's have, and the other gentleman mentioned, let's have all our current ordinances enforced, okay? All the time. I have seen increased police presence on Oak Island Drive. That's wonderful. I'm all for it. Let's enforce all these ordinances that seem like for years, nobody cared. Every time you tried to go to get a resident parking space, what was in there? There was a car that didn't have a sticker on it. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mary Beth Arrington.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Arrington, and I live at 304 Ocean Drive. I'm speaking about paid parking, and I'd like to raise a topic that I haven't heard discussed very much, and that's the visual impact that this would have on our community. Over the last several months, I've driven through Holden Beach, Carolina Beach, Currie Beach, Wrightsville Beach. The amount of signage dedicated to their parking programs is overwhelming. It's ugly. It's intrusive. It's cluttering, and it's really messy. We live in a beautiful place. A beautiful place. So just imagine, every street, every block, every intersection, every parking lot, every beach access, every open space filled with parking signage. It would look absolutely awful. All for a program that's only in effect for six months out of the year. So this program would have us trade away the natural, open beauty of our home all year long, 12 months out of the year, for six months of a system that a lot of people don't even want. And in my book, that's a terrible trade-off. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bonner Stiller. Live at 4908 East Yacht Drive, and would like to address the paid parking. If I may start. First of all, I'm afraid that the lure of money is what is brought about paid parking, this whole issue. And now we're pitting locals, citizens versus tourism, and our visitors, which brings a tremendous amount of money to this island, supports a lot of your neighbors, and the people that you talked about earlier that needed a lower housing expense, those are the folks that are filling those roles and jobs. And if we don't have jobs for them, then it's going to make it even worse. But moving right along, I've been reading and keeping up in the newspaper with the State Port Pilot about, the best I can, what this is all about. Kept a couple of copies. And talks about, you know, having this paid parking and, you know, $689,000 might be the low-end money that we could, we could get, maybe as high as 1.7 million. Well, that's triple. That's kind of a wide gate. However, the one thing I have not seen is how much does it cost? The person, do you know what you would have to pay to go to the beach, sir? So I've looked into this, and I'm sure that the council members did, because it said, Otto said, hey, Holden Beach is our model. They're your neighbor. So surely, we've gone over there and looked at that, called them, talked to them and their council people, and see how that's going and how much money they've produced in their first year. So, thank, so I'm going to have to speed up a little bit. What Holden Beach charges is $3 per hour, up to four hours, that's $12. If you go over the four hours, you pay 15. Okay, now, then Currie Beach is $5 an hour. Carolina Beach, this young lady just got up and spoke about those, but these are the prices, is $5 an hour. Or $25 a day. You could go on to Wrightsville Beach, and it's $5 per hour or $25 per day. But the real money is in the fine. It's $100. Now, I have four children, and my oldest daughter has three children. My other daughter has one on the way, plus one. And as you moms know and grandparents, it takes some time. it takes some time to load children. And if you're just a little bit late, there's gonna be a $100 fine slapped on them. So, it's, it just seems to be a shame that we're making this. I don't know why we're doing this. We should be floating in money. Thank you.
That's all I had, sign off. Very good. Thank you, everyone that spoke. Council reports. If, Bill, can I start with you?
You can. I'll be somewhat brief. Next week, we have the town retreat. We'll go to 801 Center next Tuesday and talk about our hopes and dreams and wishes for the, the coming year. What's important to everybody and what's, what they want to bring forward for the town to consider. And I listen to what the people say, and people have told me that they would like for me, pardon me?
I'm sorry, that meeting is here.
That meeting's here. Now I know, and I won't miss it.
One place.
If you all see me next Tuesday down at the 801 Center, somebody give me a ride. But, but next week, I want to bring up what people have been talking to me about. What they've been talking to me about is traffic on Yacht Drive. Let's get a handle on it. Get the rec center moving in the right direction. Figure out how much money we want to spend, where we go, and what we want to do with it. Crossovers on 20th Street. Let's get that addressed. Crossovers on Southwest 6th Street. Let's get that addressed. Bulkheads on Yacht Drive over on the intercoastal. I want to bring that up next week. Kayak launch places. People bring that up to me constantly. And the good old nemesis is always out there. And it frustrates me when people tell me my neighbor's street got paved, but my street did not get paved. So next week, I want to talk about some of these streets that haven't been paved. So I just wanted to give you a report that, that I hear you, and next week I'll talk. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Jill? No? Not a- John?
Just a comment. I, I was struck by the, the first hearing and some of the, the commentary about housing. And it occurs to me that what we're looking at is the foreshadowing of the, the next five to 10 years. As the mainland takes off and its growth ramifies, assuming the economy doesn't tank in the next six months, we're gonna be dealing with managing growth. Whether we like it or not, that's going to be the reality. And I think of the Roman goddess Janus, who looks backward and looks forward. We're gonna have to look forward as well as backward. The island that we all love 10 years ago, 15 years ago, is going to change. That is just the hard reality of it. And we need to face that. And tonight was foreshadowing. Two major developments. One was tabled, but you can see where the direction of this is going. And so I would ask for your patience and for your best thinking about how we adapt, how we evolve, and how we preserve what we can, and we manage what's, what confronts us. Because we're not frankly gonna have a choice. We cannot stop development. We can only shape it.
Thank you.
I would agree with John. This, you know, we're gonna have to move forward. We've got to find a way to do it. We've got to work to do it. Got to work together to get it done. So please, be patient. And I think Bill covered everything else, so.
We're not taking questions right now.
Okay, we skipped that under public comments. Usually you ask if there are additional people who would like to speak.
And I didn't. And my oversight, no, I didn't ask. It was my oversight. If we can finish the reports.
Just a level set. Yes, our first retreat is January the 17th. It will be here, not at the 801 Center. So Bill, if you do show up at the 801 Center, just call me. I'll run down and get you. But I also wanted to clarify that the intent of the first retreat is a, is a finance planning retreat. So we will review where we are with our actuals year-to-date, with our projections towards our budget. The intent is to set the tone for going into our budget workshop season in the spring. So it'll be an opportunity for staff and for council to make their opinions known as regarding expectations on how the, the budget should unfold in our discussions. There will be an opportunity to talk about strategic objectives. As Ms., as Council Member Kraft pointed out, at the second retreat on the 31st, we will focus on those type of items, like rec center planning and construction of crosswalks and, and crossovers and all of that good stuff. But I just wanted to make sure that the public knew, don't be shocked if you come to the first one and all we do is talk numbers. Because that is the intent of the first retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone who continues to stay engaged, be it remotely or here in person. Those of you who have reached out to many of us to express your concerns and your ideas. I try to take as many calls and/or respond to emails as I can. I'm certainly not perfect, and I may skip a few. But I, I want to share that I'm really proud of this council. We may not always agree where we agree to disagree. But for the most part, I think our council has been willing to work towards compromise. And that's not always such an easy thing to do. But I, I want you to know that you are heard, both tonight and I think on a regular basis. And I want you to invite you to continue to reach out. Because I think only in hearing the many different ideas that exist and perspectives, the lenses, different skillsets, et cetera, different subject areas of expertise, only in that process with the diversity of ideas can we really work to get the best idea possible and bring those forward to actualize them. I'm pleased that we are working with priorities, working through a process through the retreat once we have our financial tone, that we'll have priorities with set objectives, with timeframes identified. I want to continue to work to make sure that our committees and our boards are aligned with the work of council, as that is the very reason why they exist. And I'm committed to continue to work in that direction. But I do love this town. I am personally committed to continue learning. I'm attending a two-day workshop through the School of Government. I've taken online classes through the COG. So, I may not get it all right, as we individually or collectively may get it right. But I trust the intent of our council members. And I, again, indulge your, your patience and consideration as, as we work through the issues that are in front of us, because it's only gonna get more difficult. It's, it's, the pressures will not reduce, but increase. So we need you to stay engaged, and I appreciate all of your input. So thank you. Consent agenda and approval, I'm sorry?
Mayor, you, you had indicated you-
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Tunnel vision. Yes.
Oh, I have a question.
Ma'am, please, please come to the-
Can you come to the podium, please? Thank you, Ms. Reed.
My name is Sharon Borst. I'm on 48th Street. I know that we all come up here and we have to give our address. I'd like for everyone on the board, would you please raise your hand if any of you live oceanfront? Any of you have a property oceanfront, would you raise your hand? No one? Just curious. I'd like to reference what Mr. Box said, for us to have patience. I think that we have tried to have patience. But we've been sold down the road. And I think that's what many of the people here tonight feel. We've been coming to these meetings. We keep expressing what our desires are. We're told in a very nice, polite way how our opinion matters and that everyone is taking into consideration what it is that we're saying, but nothing happens. And the biggest impact of that, or the biggest, the biggest sign of that is taking out the residence parking. From day one, this council pledged that they heard us and that the resident parking would remain. And I am, to, to sit here and, and listen to have patience, we are happy to have patience, I believe all of us are. We just don't want to be swindled. And we know what, what this community is like. And we all love this community. And I'm not saying I'm against paid parking. Maybe that, maybe that is something that is a development that needs to occur. However, you must listen to these residents. Because we, we take notes. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I'll be quick, and I would have done it at another time. But because you have your retreat, I just want to mention something. When I brought up affordable housing, what I was talking about was workforce housing. And while-
I didn't hear that.
I was talking about workforce housing.
Workforce housing, yes.
And while you mentioned state and county, when you are approving things like those apartments that we currently have, where people are now getting 35% and 50% increases, not without realizing it after one year of, of lease, you do have a hand when you're approving those developments to maybe state that, I don't know, maybe set some sort of parameters, maybe state that 10%, 15% of those developments might have the ability for workforce housing for the people that, while we grow and we have to look forward, that we also look after the people that are here and the people that are providing every single service that we depend on every single day and may not have the ability to, to live to provide that service. So all I ask is to consider that when approving these massive developments, that of people who really don't care about the people who live here. So to think, to think about the residents that are here now. Thank you. And thank you for what you do. So I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Wojciech Szczesny. I'm on Northeast 61st Street. I'm sort of late to the whole paid parking thing, but it seems to me that if a bait and switch on the residential parking is being presented, at least by the residents, I feel like that maybe, if the contract was changed, maybe it should be put up for a vote by the residents. I also don't know whether the financials, I know that there's always a focus on the profit margin and the profit of what the, what the town's going to get. I don't know if anyone's considered also how much of service fees the town is going to be charged for maintenance and anything else that needs to be up kept. So maybe that $800,000 or the 1 point whatever million is probably not projected. And also, as part of a contract, what if the obligation, or at least the projected amounts, are not going to be met? With like, what is the town, does the town have a clean out out of that contract or change of vendor, et cetera? So, anyway, I just wanted to say that maybe rather than, I know it's up for public comment, but in this day and age, I don't see why you can't put it up for the vote for the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna cut this off here for nothing, but go ahead.
Sir, I'm sorry. Can you spell your name for me, please? Me?
Wojciech Szczesny.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you wanna?
S O B.
Can you just come up here, please?
Smith, just like it sounds.
Yep. You got it. So I'm gonna cut this off here, because we've got a long agenda in front of us. I hope that doesn't offend anyone. But it is time to move on. Approval of the minutes. Are there any? We've been through that, have we not?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Committee appointments.
Committee appointments. Thank you very much. No, we haven't done the consent agenda. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Favor. Thank you very much. Unanimous. Committee appointments. Part III Golf Course. There are two open positions. And there are two candidates. Brenda, Brendan Hefferman and Romney Williams. Are either of them here? Council has questions? So we have distributed ballots. If there are two positions and two candidates. I don't want to make any assumptions, but.
Yes. Unanimous votes in favor for both applicants.
Excellent. Unanimous for both applicants for the committee. Congratulations. And thank you for serving. Administrative reports, Town Manager and Attorney.
Yes, ma'am. Mike's gonna pull up a slide for us. Basically, what we want to talk about is the sidewalk and crosswalk update. We have a draft drawing for Phase 1 that's on the board. The project there goes from Northeast 46th to Northeast 51st, which is the red light at Publix. DOT, we have been working with on them. They have now decided that they're changing a few things. They would like us to do a two-way crossing now. So we'll be crossing at the intersection going north and south. And also the crossing across the north side of 51st. We found out this week on Monday that now they would like us to make it a three-way. So now we will have to do the crossing on the south side of East Oak Island Drive as well. So the engineer will change the scope of work and get those done for us. Also, they were gonna do these in two different projects. 1A will be the sidewalk, so we can get some construction started. And then 1B, since it's gonna take longer for it to get that permitted, well, they call that the crossover at the red light. Phase 2, which goes from 51st Street to 58th, that's basically the same thing. The red light at 58th Street, they've already told us it needs to be a three-way. So we're already planning for that, for that intersection. DOT is still providing traffic counts for us at the intersections, which we requested. 40th Street, 79th Street, Barbie Boulevard. Then we have four locations on Beach Drive on the east and four on the west. They are looking at those to see which ones they would look at doing. So we don't know exact locations from DOT yet. We did get the approval for the crossing next to Town Hall. So that's approved. And then we got the crossing approved at the Cabanas at Northeast 46th Street. So those crossings have been finally approved from DOT, so we can start the work going forward on those. And then we'll keep you posted on the project, on the page that Mike's creating for just sidewalks and crossovers. Second thing that we have, Councilman Kraft brought this up, talking about the road condition survey. So there's where you can find it. You can go to it and look at your streets and see when, what percentage they have. Everything goes by rankings. That takes out council or staff saying we'd like to do Mrs. Smith's road first. So it goes by rankings, and that's how the bids are done. And then we go back and look at that to see how much money the town has and how big a project that we can put up for bids. And we do that every four years. So we just did the survey this past August. So that's it up on the board. Also, Citizens Academy starts February 2nd. So you can register on the town's webpage, as you have there. Or you can give Rose a call, and she can provide the information. We've received a verbal agreement for a $5,000 grant from the North Carolina League Municipalities to purchase a mobile LED tower that'll be used by the Fire Department and Police Department. The cost of it is $12,000, but we're getting $5,000 of it paid by the league. And that's a brief, brief report.
Thank you. Do we have a projected date for the sidewalks that are approved? Will they be in by?
Phase 1, 1A that we've applied for, it's probably gonna be 90 days in-house before they release something. So that's why we split it up, because we did not want to delay the sidewalks through the intersection. The intersection will probably take three to six months to get approval. And we've asked if they can do 51st and 58th at the same time. asked if they can do 51st and 58th at the same time, to try to speed that along, and I do not know if they accepted our proposal or not.
So we're hoping for this calendar year?
Yes, ma'am.
Will we see any sidewalks between now and...
June 30th? We are hoping so.
Okay, that's, excellent. And as well as the crosswalks on...
The crosswalk at 46, we'll go ahead and put that in this year. The other crossovers will be at the red light, so they will come later. But the ones on Beach Drive, once we have the locations where they've done the traffic study for that, which is what they have posted for March and April, is when they'll come to a count, they'll do one count in March, then they'll do a second count in April during the holiday weekend to see what kind of traffic or volume is there. And then they'll get back to us and we'll pick some locations.
Is there a reason why they pick months that are not peak, where we had the issues? So they're counting when traffic on the island is lower?
So they, I mean, April, I mean, they're gonna come for Easter weekend, so they should pick up a, a pretty good weekend for that one. And the other one that we got for 46 was they picked it up on Labor Day, so we were able to get that one.
Okay.
So they do try to accommodate us as much as they can.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate the report. Mr., go ahead.
Just a quick question. The width of the sidewalks, they are being located in the same path of the feasibility study that we adopted last year from the RPO, indicates that that area is a potential greenway in the future. So are we looking at wider sidewalks to accommodate attaching to a greenway in the future, or...
They are, they are five feet in width is what they allow us to. So it would match up to the, what you're talking about from 46th Street to Rec Center.
Okay, good.
I also highly want to recommend the Citizens Academy. If you've not attended, it is absolutely a worthwhile experience. Things that, you'll learn about things that usually happen behind the scenes, but this comes with a warning. I am a graduate of a Citizens Academy, so you too may be a future mayor for Oak Island. Or, or council member.
There are only five spaces left.
Five spaces left, all right. So, thank you very much. And Rose does a wonderful job, and Councilman Bell is one of the impetuses for, and the creator of the Citizen Academy. Y'all have done excellent work, because it really is a great experience. Mr. Eads.
We have a few things to talk about in closed session. Other than that, I don't have a report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Old business, proposed amendments to Chapter 28 of the Code ordinances for parking, and we're back to you, Matt.
Bear with me just a moment, we'll get some slides pulled up here for you.
Could you?
Yep, sorry. So bear with me just a moment while Mike gets the slides pulled up and we'll, we'll get started.
Right away, you don't have to come out here one day, Mike.
One day. We'll get there. Yeah, that's fine, that's the next slide, anyway. All right, wait for it to come up on the screen, and then we'll be all set. All right. So this is a proposed text amendment to Chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances related to parking. So the town council's obviously been working through proposals for paid parking services on the island. Our current right-of-way ordinances are not set up to regulate parking in that type of scheme, so the proposed amendments would facilitate the regulation of paid parking and parking within the right-of-way. The proposed ordinances would prohibit parking in the right-of-way in the season from April 1 to September 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It would create three parking zones on the island, and we'll take a look at those three in just a bit and what they mean. There would be a police enforcement zone, essentially everything north of Davis Canal up to 40th, and then it would pick up north of East Oak Island Drive. After that, the enforcement of the parking ordinances in that area would be the responsibility of the Town of Oak Island Police Department. The commercial zone is a commercial property within, on the island. As you are all well aware, there's existing parking within the right-of-way in that area that most of those businesses rely on. It just happens to stretch into the DOT right-of-way, so those areas are zoned out to permit the continued use of those. And then the vendor enforcement zone, where the, the parking enforcement would fall on the vendor that town council selects, should it select one. And so, here we have a map of the island. The green is the police enforcement zone up here. These little gray hashed areas are the commercial areas, and we'll look at the whole island as we go along. This is kind of starting on the western end. The areas that aren't colored in are the vendor enforcement, and within those areas, we've identified potential areas for paid parking. Now, it would have to be at a spot with a bumper that is labeled as paid parking. You couldn't just pull into one of these areas and go, let's, let's park here because it's on the parking map. The ordinance still specifies that within those areas, you have to park in a marked and bumpered spot. And as we travel along the island, you can see, as I mentioned, most of this is in the green. We've identified the commercial corridors here and the gray hashed out, and then we'd continue along down all the way to the end of the island's jurisdiction. Wait me just a second here. This map, should Town Council adopt it, would be posted on the website. This is a, it's formatted small for a PowerPoint, but I promise you, it's several feet long when you print it out, so you can zoom in and get some detail. In addition, I've been working on an online format for this map, and it's very easy to navigate. You can punch in an address and see what type of zone you're in very easily. That's, should Town Council adopt something, that should be ready to go within a day or two. So, information should be available pretty easily. In addition to the areas, parking in the right-of-way is prohibited within 40 feet of any intersection, any portion of roadway, pavement, or travel lane, pedestrian crosswalks, sidewalks, or pedestrian accessways, blocking access to driveways or mailboxes, facing opposing traffic, blocking or adjacent to fire hydrants and emergency beach accessways within 15 feet, and designated handicap or disabled veteran space without placard or registration plate. Those are pretty common right-of-way parking prohibitions. Anyway, I believe they're actually currently in our ordinance, all of these, in our current ordinance are already in there. There are a few exceptions to right-of-way parking restrictions. Emergency or government vehicles, obviously, if the police were pulling up somewhere, or ambulance, you probably want them to be able to pull in and park. Public and private utility vehicles, private vehicles when used during a response to emergency. Sometimes you have volunteer firemen who are in their personal vehicle. Private vehicles being used for any other bona fide governmental purpose. And then finally, private contractor or service vehicles when performing legitimate services at a specific location and receiving those services. So that's your, you know, if you've got somebody working on your AC, or somebody coming to clean your house, those people need to be able to park somewhere, and so that's accepted from these ordinances. Now, that last one does have a few caveats, including the ordinance. It has to be completely, it can't be parked overnight. It can't be on any portion of the roadway, so it has to be completely off of the pavement. They can't be parked on a sidewalk, and any damage to the right-of-way is responsible, the responsibility of the contractor in that instance. That's a brief summary of these ordinance changes. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. As we go forward, you have the draft amendments in front of you as well.
Questions for Matt?
Matt, I'll jump in first. Page 84, Section 28.5. Just to get that understood, because I'm asked that from time to time. "No person shall operate any motor vehicle, electric assist bicycle, or other type of electric vehicles on the beach strand." Correct.
That's already in the ordinance, yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's would not change with that.
If I can go to page 92. I remember Councilwoman Bell brought up golf carts on Oak Island Drive once upon a time, and now on Section 28.38, where it's being addressed.
Those are already in the ordinance. The, the black in front of you is existing ordinances. So if it's black text, that's already in there. Only thing that's changed is the red text. Those are strike-throughs or removals, underlines or additions.
Lastly, page 98, and I just want to reiterate it so it'll be said out loud one more time. "No vehicles may be left parked overnight." That is right-of-way and/or strand, correct?
It, it is, yes, sir. Overnight is overnight.
All right. I just needed to hear it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Matt, I have a question on the 28.39. Golf carts must complete a golf cart registration application. Is, is that, do we have a separate application for golf carts other than for vehicles in general?
Should not kick that over to the police chief, because I don't have any. Once again, that's existing ordinance, and I'm not familiar with any of that process.
That's just the first time I'm aware of it.
That's right.
Chief, can you add any insight?
Okay.
Moving vehicles. Right, thank you for that. Can we make that specification here, Matt? I don't know what the language would be for, but for A, can we specify that those are for the golf carts that are, have the placards, the orange placards on the back?
I don't know why council couldn't do that. I'm looking at the attorney to make sure that it's okay to make that change, when that's not a...
Because it sounds like all golf carts here.
Yeah. I get where you're coming from.
Those to the ones with the placard.
Yeah.
We would look to staff for recommended language?
I think so, yes, ma'am. Yeah. I, I don't know why we couldn't change it, but I don't have any language in front of you right now that...
Exactly. I didn't expect you to, but... Mr. Eads?
That change wouldn't happen tonight, because it's...
No, no, no. I'm just asking for future.
Sure.
If I can make one just observation, that is part of a whole section called Article II Golf Cart says Mobility Assistance Devices.
Okay.
All of that falls under that section, and, I mean, because there are pages of...
Okay, and I failed to see the...
Yeah, it just falls under two pages earlier.
The nesting.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. That may well take care of it. I see that now. You're off the hook.
Thank you. I've done enough work.
No other questions for Matt?
Make the motion to approve the amendment to Chapter 28 and adopt the parking zone map.
Is there a second?
Sir?
All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Consideration of the auto contract for a paid program. You've ushered these discussions before. John, I'm gonna pass this to you.
Well, the contract is, is before us. The decision to engage was made previously. The actual contract is here. I would like to take a moment to say, it's been a long and very complex conversation, stretching over four months. It's not the first time we've had this conversation, and we are, we are mindful that good men and women can disagree about tactics, and even occasionally about objectives. But the objective of council was to manage our resources and to provide for an orderly, stable, and yes, safe environment. And there's tons of data, despite what some may say, both in terms of the surge in rentals, in terms of the chambers estimate of visitors. More importantly, as Bob Dylan said, you don't need a weatherman to tell you which way the wind's blowing. I mean, we all saw it, and it is something that has to be addressed, because it's going to get worse if we don't take action, as we witnessed earlier tonight. There are more developments and more people, and they are coming. We wanted to also preserve the lifestyle, the quality of lifestyle for people who live there. There are residents who live down there, and they call us constantly during the summer season, and we have an obligation to protect them as well. Then we come to the matter of revenue, which we have not really stressed. But revenue is important, because right now, we as taxpayers, they are 100% of the cost of the beach and the amenities, enforcement. And as many have argued repeatedly for a long period of time, that's not fair. I agree. It's not fair. So how do we get to a system that balances the needs of residents, gives them some tax relief, and also allows us to manage our precious resource and not have it inundated and overrun, and hence paid parking? Now, I will say, the conversation was quite fluid. We began with this assumption, there are 182 reserved parking spaces, there are 7,500 decals. You do the math. It doesn't work. That's notwithstanding other visitors who just simply take those spaces. It's an enforcement nightmare. We have not been able to get 100% level of enforcement there. We also then talked about, well, let's increase the number of reserved spaces. And that was part of the conversation for a while, until that idea was set aside. Then there was a discussion about, well, perhaps we should charge everyone. That was rather quickly rejected, and we ended up with the system that is proposed in the auto contract. The first come, first served, and what we need to do tonight, if council is willing to move forward, is set the rates, which are not included in the contract, for hourly, daily, weekly, and discuss the price of selling external visitor passes for season, and whether or not we're gonna limit the, the amount of those. That's how we've arrived there. It's frankly been quite transparent. It's, you can go back and see it. You may not believe so, but it has been. It's all been in public session. So, I'll let the rest of council respond to rate structure and what you believe the rates should be.
Is there a proposal on the table that, regarding rates?
I'll just state the rate schedule that I eventually came to the conclusion of. I will...
Madam Mayor?
Sorry.
Just a point of order.
Please.
Councilman Martin brought, someone made a comment tonight about his employment. Several weeks ago, if not months ago, Councilman Martin called me, and we discussed his employment, and he asked me if I thought he had a conflict of interest. Based on our discussion, I did not see where he had any direct financial interests in this vote. He does not get some sort of a bonus. It's, it's all the type of software. He's not incentivized. And if that's changed, Councilman Martin, please let me know if I'm misstating this in any way.
That's a good point, council. I'm happy to go on record publicly tonight. If you want to ask me the required legal questions, I'm happy to answer those on record.
Yeah, I mean, I'm satisfied, basically, we'll get it on the records. As you heard, Mr. Martin, there's been some, at least one comment that I heard tonight concerning your employment, so could you just tell us who your employer is? Who, who, who do you work for?
I am employed by IBM.
Okay. And auto, the contract before us, the software they use, is IBM the proprietor of that software?
It is not. They use Amazon Web Services.
Okay. Do you have any financial ties to Amazon Web Services?
I do not.
Okay. Do you, in your opinion, have any financial direct benefit? Would you receive any direct financial benefit if auto was selected as the parking vendor?
I would not.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'm satisfied that under North Carolina law, Councilman, Councilman Martin does not have a conflict of, financial conflict of interest, and therefore is not required to be recused. And since the comment was made tonight, I want the public to know, and I don't know where to look for the cameras. Mr. Martin brought that to my attention several... Mr. Martin brought that to my attention several weeks ago, if not two months ago. So I think in all fairness, he, that, that needs to be made public, particularly based on the public comment tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And I didn't mean to interrupt, but before he engaged in deliberations, I wanted to get all of that out on the record.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
As council member, I'm sorry.
Rate schedule.
Oh, yeah.
Back to rate schedule.
As Councilmember Bach had mentioned, there have been discussions amongst council and staff for, for many months, many hours. What we have shown and received publicly is only a small portion of the complex information and points of view, and I will say that I'm, I'm happy that we actually came with different points of view. Every council member had, had an opinion or an approach. We worked diligently to reconcile those on the belief that we were acting in the best interest of residents. We have identified, as Councilmember Bach pointed out, that with over 7,500 decals and only 180 spaces, you were actually competing against yourselves for a parking space. And there were several occasions leading up to tonight where residents would say, I have a decal and I can't find parking. So we created this illusion years ago with these decals, that that meant you would always find a parking space, and that is unfortunate. And enforcement has always been an issue with these spaces. I don't know if any of you heard the chief's report from the summer. They did the best they could. Many of their violations that they did write citations for were, guess what? For decals, huh, wow, expired decals on our own residence vehicles. That was a good bit of the violations that were reported in those reserved spaces. So part of this moving forward is trying to figure out, how do we enable enforcement? And enforcement will come in the form of, of the police department still doing enforcement, but now the vendor partners with us for enforcement, and that's significant, right? How do we manage these spaces? Traditionally, in peak season, where do people park? Anywhere where they believe there's a parking space. So yes, when we refer to protecting property, identifying public safety issues, parking anywhere you want to because you think it's a parking space creates blind spots, creates pedestrian hazard when they're trying to cross the street with their chairs and their kids, right? Furthermore, the more we increase reserve spots, you're taking those spots out of a parking system. That again, how will we enforce them? We don't enforce 180 spots today, how would you expect us to enforce 300, or 500, or 1,000 spots in the future? We, we're just not equipped to do that. So in the end, we came up with a fee schedule that I think is very accommodating and fair. The first part of the fee schedule, and we said this, I believe, last month, and, and we have consensus across the council, your decal will be honored for this season. You have a decal, you can park at no cost to you, because you've already invested in the decal program. That's a big first step, I believe, for year one, is there's no financial burden to residents with a decal for parking. Then the next part of that is, so what do we charge visitors who want to come here for the day, or a couple of days, or a week, right? And so I was actually at a lower fee schedule, but through collaborating with my peers, we were able to get to what I believe is a common ground, which is $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week, and $160 for an annual pass, with a cap of only 1,000 annual passes being available for outside residents. So that's where my position is currently in terms of the fee schedule. I'm at 5, 20, 80, 160.
Thank you.
I can agree to that, except that I think the annual passes should maybe be higher than that. And I'm open for, I mean, I'm just saying that for discussion. Even 175, 200. Residents are free, so for annual, annual passes, shouldn't they be higher than 160, maybe?
I think he was proposing 160.
I'm at 160.
Excuse me. Yeah, you just, you said 160.
Right.
That's what I wrote down.
If you'd like to propose another number, then...
I would like to propose 175.
So we have 160?
Or the 1,000 out-of-town people?
Still 1,000 cap.
Excuse me. Let us have this conversation, please.
My turn?
Go ahead.
I bit my tongue, I waited my turn. I wrote it all down, so I'll get it, get it right. This entire scenario, I've had reservations. All along, I've said, I need to know the specifics. The devil is in the detail. Now we are being asked to vote on a contract entirely different from what we were first pursuing. Why? I, I fought, and I held out until I got an agreement that Oak Island permit holders, for $10 annually, would not be charged. I smiled that day. I wanted specifics, I wanted transparency, and I wanted details. When this started, there were 182 decal parking spots, and I kept saying I wanted to double that. I wanted 364. I wanted to get to that detail. I was told to vote for the paid parking program and wait for the details later. Some were willing to go to 300 decal spots. I thought we were moving in the right direction. I kept voting no, or I abstained. I wanted specifics. Finally, once paid parking was voted, I had to then choose which of the three paid parking companies am I going to go with. For two reasons, I went with auto. I asked auto how they could make a profit with only 1,200 spaces and 7,500 Oak Island decals. I was told by auto that they felt we had 2,000 parking spaces rather than 1,200. So for that reason, I voted for auto. Now the contract that we have in front of us says only 1,200 spots. No attempt to secure the other 800 spots have materialized, either by auto or by our town. That's unacceptable. No second thought given to protecting the decal spots. No signs will disappear for decal parking. This is atrocious. Who are we looking out for? There's 1,200 parking spaces. No more right-of-way parking. In the past, when a decal holder could not park in a decal spot, they would go to the right-of-way. No more right-of-way parking. Now we're giving away, we're trying, or talking about giving away 1,000 spots to people from Fayetteville, from Charlotte, from BSL, from Ohio, in an already crowded parking spot. That's ludicrous for me. First come, first served, no decal spots. But with that expectation of 2,000 spaces, taking away decal spots and not having enough spaces does not protect the Oak Island taxpayers. You've got a decal. So what, so what are we doing? I now feel our residents will be driving around constantly, looking for a space that cannot be found. What happened to the 364 decals? What happened to the 300 decals? What happened to the 2,000 spaces? Selling a large number of passes to out-of-towners is nothing but a money grab. And what, what, what does it make, makes it that much harder for Oak Island taxpayers to find a place to park? I don't factor in Charlotte, or Ohio, or Raleigh, when I try to figure out what's best for Oak Island. I factor in Oak Island taxpayers. This will only happen if this council allows it. It will only happen if these five people vote for out-of-control, out-of-town sales. It falls on five people sitting up here on this podium to take away the reserved spots. Me, I will not vote for that. If that happens, where will our neighbors with free parking decals park? I'm almost finished. When are we going to honor and protect the people of Oak Island? The town belongs to the people of Oak Island.
Yes.
We fought for and prevailed for free parking for our residents with decals, and then taking every step to give away every available parking spot. It's ludicrous. We need to have a year, and please think about this, we need to have one year to see what happens, see how it inconveniences our people. I am in favor of $5 an hour, $25 a day, $125 a week, stop. No out-of-town parking. If you've got 1,200 parking spaces, give me the 300 we first talked about. 300 places set aside for Oak Island residents. Everybody else can come, they can look for parking spots. What happens to residents first? It says, we say we listen to everybody, we, we hear what you have to say, and then you come back here and say, you listen to what we have to say, and then you ignore us. We've got a chance now. Five people on this council have a chance to say, we heard you, we will honor you. As for me...
Excuse me?
As for me, I'm going to vote no. I want $5 an hour, $25 a day, no out-of-town parking, passes issued. I can live with that. That's my compromise.
Excuse me?
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
I think Councilman Craft's position is...
Excuse me?
If you don't mind. Thank you, sir. I can support $5, $20 a day, and although I would prefer it to be higher than 80, I could support that. I support $175. I am troubled by the 1,000 number as a cap, but again, in the interest of striking a compromise, I'm willing to support it, to see if it works. If it doesn't work, we can change it. This process allows, the contract allows for us to make changes while in motion, and certainly at the end of the first year, we'll look at the analytics. So I will support your proposal and the bulk of yours, Councilman Martin.
John, what do you have? You have five?
20, 80, which is what Councilman Martin proposed. I support Councilwoman Bell's 175 for anyone buying a next...
With a cap of 1,000.
Visitor annual pass.
Hang on, hang on, please. Let us have this con, we heard you. Now let us have the conversation based on the input, please.
I, I share Councilman Martin's understanding that all decals currently purchased will be honored.
Excuse me. Excuse me, please. I think we also had a conversation about those who do not yet have, or are not in our system, that because it was a two-year program, $20 per vehicle, we're down to one year left in that obligation, or that commitment, that others are able to, these are, these are people who pay taxes on the island. We're not talking about anyone outside of that. So we're talking about the non-resident taxpayers, the part-time, what we talk about is part-time residents. I think we also had a conversation that they would also be eligible, along with residents who have not bought a parking decal in the past, is how we referred to it, that they would also be able to register their vehicles at $10, which is an equitable situation. Am I wrong there? Was that part of the agreement?
No, I believe you're correct.
Okay. I just wanted to, to put that in. So that's one point. Councilman Blaylock, do you have a, before I speak?
No, I, I agree with what Mr. Martin said.
Okay.
May I call a question?
I have one more thing I'd like to say. Page six of the auto contract. Proposal stated, on a cost burden to leverage visitors to offset costs. Where is that taking place?
There, there was no motion.
Was there a motion on the table?
There is no motion on the table.
It was not seconded.
We were talking about the tax rates. There wasn't a motion.
All right. Page second, page seven of the proposal stated, get this one, free, reduced fee or standard parking for selected parking areas, including resident-only areas. That is what the proposal said. It's nowhere to be found in our contract. I hated hearing the word bait and switch, but I'll say it. Wow.
All right. So here's my question to council, and I rarely weigh in as mayor, because I respect the purview of council as having the vote on these issues, but I will register this, this question. So we are talking about $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week, and I'm glad we upped the 175 cap in terms of...
Well, we had two that were 175, and two that were 160.
And 160, but it's, it's more than, than earlier numbers that I've seen discussed this week. But you, you have to appreciate it, 80, $80 for a week, excuse me, $80 a week, that someone is paying for four days and getting three days for free, and these are people who are renting homes, many of which come with a golf cart as a, as a perk that would be registered in the system. So I think we can do better on that weekly, those are, those are the people that come and stay. They're not the people outside of our community who come for the day to enjoy the beach. Those are, those are different individuals than those who would be eligible for a so-called season pass. But what seemingly to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm looking at this, and we have 1,200 spots, there's room to expand, at least according to the vendor, somewhere more than 1,200 spots. So if what we're talking about, and based on the input that I've received this week, and hearing everyone that spoke tonight, if it's a financial consideration, and we can find some, at least the number of reserved spots that we have, it, we're concerned about the math, I think we can do better with the weekly rate, number one. The cap of 1,000, that's a big number. So I, I, my personal view is, I think we owe it to our citizens with that influx, graded, at least it's capped, because currently there's no cap. Everybody comes. But I, I think there is room in this to, even if we add, let's say there's 200 reserved spots, or whatever that number is, that there's room then to add 200 spots that, for visitors, and regardless of who they are, whether they are weekly, would be a weekly permit, to offset, rekeeping, at least in this first year, which I consider equivalent to a restaurant's soft opening. Let's, we don't have to change everything at once, is what I want to ask council to consider. And consider keeping the reserved spots in place. If necessary, we can add that same number of spots that can be monetized so that it's a wash. Please point out the fallacy in my thinking, but I think there's really room to negotiate a solution here that fits everybody's needs.
I'm going to point out the biggest elephant in the room. Why do we care how many spaces we sell to people in Charlotte, and Raleigh, and Ohio, and Virginia? Is that a money grab? Why do we care? There's no spaces for them. Part of our start of this was to control traffic coming over the bridge, but now we're saying, 1,000 of you, come on over. We got 1,200 spots, you can have them first.
So let me say this.
We're $175.
Whoopie.
Let me say this. So let's, let's compare what we're talking about, a paid parking system, or a permitted parking system. Those 1,000 people are coming now for free. So at least we've put a cap on that. Those people are coming to the beach now, and they park any damn place they want to.
Nobody parking our right-of-way that we took away from ourself and them.
Okay, so the, what, what, and, I'm sorry, I can't take your question. This is council discussion, but I appreciate. But I, I think there is a win-win here, where we can retain for this first year, where we can take data, and the... can take data, and the only reason not to have the reserved spaces for our citizens is if we learn that they're not used, then it's an empty space, but I don't think for the six months out of the year, that's going to be the case. So, what I'm, what I'm asking council is, if it's a money thing, then we add the spaces on the other end and we find the number, the same number on the outside, but I believe it's technologically available or doable, and I think it's worth, it's worth considering. And I asked you to, to consider that.
With all due respect, I'll make this motion. So, $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week, $175 for an annual pass. The administration will be charged with finding 182 additional spaces if possible, and they will be reserved spaces per your recommendation.
Excuse me?
Thank you. Is there a second?
What's the hiccup?
I would like, if, if that motion did not carry, I would like to make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
I haven't made it yet.
Seconded, John's. So, this gives us the ability to retain, so you have the same thing you currently have, is that not what you've asked for?
Don't buy it.
Hold on, wait a minute, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, call the vote, but, you know.
There's a second.
Are you the mayor?
Excuse me?
Call the question, Mayor.
It's a matter of protocol. Mr. Edwards? I've got it, thank you, I appreciate it. So, we have a second to the motion. John, or Lisa, if you have that written down, could you...
Well, I wanted to clarify, so the numbers were $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week, and 175 for an annual pass. Was there a cap? Okay. And then adding 182 spaces, do you want to clarify that that means there will be...
If found, would be reserved.
364 decal spaces.
Well, we currently have 182 reserved spaces.
I understand that, but I just want to make sure in the motion that it was clear that those will be retained as well.
Yes, but if council wanted to add additional spaces, it, to offset what we're keeping as the reserved spaces, that's a possibility.
That's what the motion effectively will do if we find the spaces.
Additional space, with keeping the, retaining the current reserved spots as they are.
Yes.
Yeah. The intent has always been to ask staff before year two to go find 2,000 parking spaces. So, for discussions to imply that we are never going to go get those 2,000 parking spaces is irresponsible. Our intent in our discussions...
I didn't imply that.
To say that that was our intent, 2,000...
Excuse me, our intent in our discussions...
Don't put words in our mouth.
Bill, one at a time.
Our intent in our discussions has always been, before year two, we've asked staff to go find...
Additional spaces.
Additional spaces. So, that has always been the intent.
And I appreciate that. What, what I'm trying to do is to honor what you've asked for, to retain the reserved spots that are currently there. Consider this first year soft opening. That's all I'm, and we're going to learn, we're not going to get it right, I'm going to tell you that right now. So, we have a motion on the table and a second. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Well, let's have some discussion, I haven't discussed.
What we discussed after the point of order? Lisa?
I mean, the rules...
Excuse me, we're having, I'm sorry, but you cannot inject.
I would like to...
No, I'm sorry, as much as I appreciate you in being here, but you're out of order. Lisa?
Sir, sir, please let me answer the question that was asked, thank you. The question was to call the question, and the rules or procedure state that there should be 20 minutes of discussion following a motion.
The second?
However, I mean, it's, this is, these are council rules or procedure. I mean, you had your discussion ahead of time, but then now you have a motion, so the rules do say 20 minutes.
We have 20 minutes additional of discussion.
If, if that's what council wants to take.
Okay.
We shouldn't make the motions.
Bill, go ahead.
We've already had an hour and a half.
And I, I agree with that interpretation.
Thank you, Mr. Eads, I didn't mean to exclude you.
Unfortunately, whichever way you guys want to look at it, the prior discussion time does not eat into that post-motion time limit.
Thank you, and that's what I was wondering.
Yes, ma'am.
We're trying to...
What makes sense to me is, we keep saying, this is a soft opening, this is a trial run, let's take a look at it and see what happens. Those are wonderful words. Now, let's do this. Let's not sell 1,000 open-ended passes to people from Ashland, Kentucky. Let's do that next year, after we figure out where all, all our problems are. For, for this first year, let's have 300 set aside passes for our residents, and then whatever hourly rate you all want to come up with, I'll compromise and agree with. But let's get off this 1,000 people, taking our 1,200 parking spaces. That's ludicrous, that's, and, and I hate to say, I hate to say this, because I don't want this to be my image, but doggone it, they're peeing on your shoes and telling you it's raining. This is not right. They're telling you one thing, they're doing another.
So, if we don't put the 1,000 cap on it, then it's open-ended.
250. I can compromise at 250, for that lady that lives in Southport that wants to walk on the beach at 10 o'clock in the morning, let her buy a pass for $150, $175. 200 passes to these out-of-towners, but worrying about renters that come from Ohio and, and Charlotte and Raleigh, I can't ever agree.
Bill...
You're right. So, they just...
Bill, the people coming, other than within a drivable distance, are paying a weekly rate, they're not coming by the day, so that's one thing.
They might come for a month at a time, two months at a time.
But they're, then, those are the individuals, you're right, who are coming and they're paying a seasonal rate, but now they're paying nothing. So, they're coming anyway.
1,000's a big number, folks.
Well, it's not a different number, it's what I'm trying to share.
If you don't put the cap on it, then they can come and pay the $80 or $100 or $20 a day.
Or $5 an hour.
It's not going to stop them from coming.
And they're, and they're still going to pay. What I'm trying to do is find a middle ground, a compromise, because nothing has, in this thing, nothing has changed with, nothing has changed from what we experienced this past year. It's exactly the same model, except the people that are coming for the week, they, they come and they pay nothing. What I'm trying to get to is to retain our reserved spots, is what you asked us to do. We can't stop people coming from the beach. They come now. I'm asking for council to, and which is the motion on the table, is to retain the reserved spots that currently exist, they will not go away in this first year, and then we'll look at the data, we get weekly reports, we'll get monthly reports, and we'll get seasonal reports. We'll look at the data, and you'll have other opportunities to provide input when we consider the contract for next year. This is a one-year contract.
Can we vote, please, on those?
Well, there's 20 minutes of discussion, is there anything else to be said?
I have, I have nothing else to say. I, I've, I've said my piece, but I'm going to say one last thing. When are we going to protect the Oak Island taxpayers?
Well, didn't we just do that?
No, we did not just do that, we gave away 1,000 spots to everybody.
It's a two-year.
I can vote, I can vote.
It's a two-year.
It's a two-year, ma'am.
It's a one-year contract, but Bill, they're coming now.
They're coming now, and they had right-of-way parking, we took away right-of-way parking. There used to be thousands of parking spots, let's say 2,500, there was right-of-way parking. We took all that away, now there's 1,200 spots and that is it. We've sold 7,500 decals, probably going to sell another 1,000 or so in the next month. There's 1,200 spots, and we're saying, how about finding 1,000 more people to, to have a, a permit?
Wow. All right, so is there anything else to be said on this issue? And, Mr. Kelly?
Just remember, it's a two-year contract in front of you, ma'am.
Is it two-year? Thank you. But it doesn't mean, so the parameters of the contract for the audience's information, we change the parameters of the contract with the vendor at, at any point, but I, I will continue, it's a two-year contract, I stand corrected. So, but the commitment is there by your council to retain the...
Yes, council?
Ma'am, this is...
I'm sorry, but this is deteriorating quickly, and if we have to clear the room to continue the discussion, I will ask that we do that. Out of deep respect, we heard you, we were quiet, but you've got to let us have this discussion. Please respect the process. So, with this, Mr. Kelly, I want to ask that we look for additional spaces throughout the summer, working with the vendor to reconcile where those spaces can be.
In the map that was shown earlier by Matt, we've already identified other areas that we can enlarge the parking. That is something we're looking at doing through the year with the contractor.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
So, when council, we didn't know if you were going forward with this or not going forward with this, but at a point of conclusion, when you say, if you do go ahead and vote for this night, then you would give us direction to start working with the vendor to go ahead and start adding the extra spots. There are certain hot areas that we know from last year and previous years where, as Councilman Craft pointed out, where people go park now that's not in the right-of-way, we've got to look at other areas to be able to put parking within the right-of-way to see if we can place paid parking in those areas.
Okay.
So, that is the direction that council's been giving to staff through this whole process.
So, so, I'm, just for the public's sake, what I'm hearing is it is our intent to increase the number of spaces as we can, we're not waiting until next year to expand the parking spaces. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. I mean, that's been what we've discussed the whole time.
Correct.
The goal was always to try to get to a, a number, which was 2,000, what we had come up with originally, when we had the survey done, and then the vendor has gone out and looked at areas as well, and the chief identified different hot streets and those where we had the most problems last year. And those are the areas we, that we will go back into, that we've said, and look at placing paid parking or parking or whatever's going to be decided tonight in those locations.
And what is the likelihood that those spaces will be added, say, by May 1, when it gets really hot and heavy here?
We've already got the grader on order, so the auto grader, or the motor grader will come in, will identify the spaces. If you approve the contract with the vendor, where we would go to first, and then staff would start putting it, because it's up to staff to put those spots in, not the vendor.
Okay, very good, thank you, I appreciate that. So, Lisa, if we can do a roll call vote, please.
Okay.
Can we just have a clarification on the motion? I want to make sure of that...
Thank you, one more time.
Because I did hear Councilmember Bach include in his motion to instruct staff to, to accelerate the timeframe to identify additional parking spaces, so I just want to make sure we're clear.
That's why I asked the question, I did, and Mr. Kelly, and he said we are, so, but go ahead.
Okay, the motion included a setting rates at $5 per hour, $20 per day, $80 per week, 175 for an annual pass with a cap of 1,000 annual passes, retaining the current decal spaces, and add an additional 182 spaces for additional resident decal spaces.
Which will come anyway as we add spaces, as identified by Mr. Kelly. Can I also ask that we consider where they would be additional, where we can actually expand the reserved spaces? So, if we're adding 500 spaces, where is it we might be able to add reserve spots to add to the 182, so that our 8,000-plus current sticker holders can find a place to park? Is that an unreasonable request?
No.
Well, is that part of his, the motion? That's right.
No, I'm asking for feasibility.
As long as it's distinct from the motion on the, on the floor.
So, is there an amended, do we need to do an amended motion? I need a council member to do that if we're to ask to expand the number of reserved spaces in proportion to the others.
I'm all out of motions, there's one on the floor, but someone else cares to amend, they can.
I think the horse is dead, he's pretty close to it.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Lisa, if you proceed with the roll call vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Perot, Timboree Bach?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Craft?
No.
Councilmember Blaylock?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Do we need to do now by way of directing staff to find additional...
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Hey, Mayor, can we take a quick recess, please?
Yes.
That'll clear the room out.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, clear the room out.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break? Apologize for the extended break, there were points of order that we needed to cover. We'll bring the beating back to order. And, Mr. Eads?
Madam Mayor, out of abundance of caution, I'm going to recommend that we first have a motion to suspend the rules, to add an item to the agenda, and that item will be to reinstate Section 28, 10.2, located on page 88 of the agenda packet, until next I realize that this talks in terms of decals versus the license or tag registration, that is a more internal issue. Obviously, we're not going to enforce an ordinance, portion of this ordinance, if it's obsolete because of the ordinances we passed tonight. So, if the, if it's the consensus of council, if those two motions pass, staff and I will work to bring back a new Section 28, 10.2, or a section that will harmonize with the newly passed ordinances from tonight. So, the first, my first recommendation is a motion to suspend the rules, and that requires...
So moved, council.
Is there a second? Thank you, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Is there a motion to add the reinstitution of Section 28, 10.2 to the agenda?
I'll make such a motion, provided that council is going to forward edits to council, is that the plan?
Yes, sir, but first, we're going to add it to the agenda, then we're going to vote to reinstate it. So, it's actually three motions.
I'll make a motion to reinstate Section 28...
No, we have to add...
Add, sorry.
Add the agenda.
We've already amended the rules.
Suspend the rules.
We already did that.
So, now, a motion to add...
Yeah.
Section 28, 10.2 to the agenda.
That's what I was doing.
Okay.
Motion to add 28-10.2.
Second.
All in favor.
Now, is there a motion to...
Now.
A motion to reinstate Section 28, 10.2, and I apologize, Mr. Bach, I misunderstood your earlier motion, to reinstate it with the understanding that staff and the town attorney will bring back edits next month.
So moved, council.
Second.
All in favor. Unanimous, thank you very much. Also, if there are no objections, I'd like to ask Mr. Kelly to work, to find, as we're expanding the number of spaces in the system, to also look where we can add spaces in our reserved, add reserve spots to that system, and then bring that back to council for consideration. I'd appreciate that. And I think with these changes, and I think the cooperation of council with these changes, we're able to meet everyone's needs, or at least come closer to it than where we were when we all started. So, I appreciate your cooperation. Next item, yes?
If you'll indulge me, I just want to thank Miss Tara Royal for her scrutiny of various town business, thank you. Even if it gets heck on my face, I thank her just the same. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so, thank you for that, I appreciate it, and yes, thank you, Tara. New business, consideration of resolution, continued opposition, resolution of continued opposition of HB 496 in support of retaining local control over tree ordinances. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimously passes, I will include this in a letter to Representative Miller. Among items, we're asking him to address, Mr. Martin, Lisa's going to send me, with your permission, Lisa's going to send me your list, so I can consolidate them and include them in, in the letter, so I can try to get that out this week. All right, so with that, do we have a motion to go to closed session?
I'll make a motion to go to closed session, to consult with the town attorney, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to discuss specific personnel pursuant to NCGS 143, 318, 11A, 36.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much, let's get this done, people. We're back from closed session, no action was taken by council.
I'd like to make a motion.
This is your favorite part.
I'd love to make a motion.
To adjourn.
To adjourn this meeting that we've been in for four hours.
All in favor?
Yeah.
It's unanimous.
I'm still closer.
For next Tuesday at 9:00?
Thank you for hanging in there.